Good afternoon, how is everyone?
Good.
Good. I'm gonna call the Davis County Board of Elections, October fourteenth meeting to order. Mr. Elliott, would you lead us in the prayer and invocation?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father God, we come before you tonight, and Father God, we lift up Commissioner McClure and his wife Kay in prayer as they battle sickness. Father, we ask that you just heal them, Lord. Father God, our hearts go out towards western Carolina. Father God, for our commissioner friends who are leading out there trying to recover from devastation. Father, we pray for those commissioners who from this board have donated their time and their money and their efforts to go help. Father God, we're so thankful, Lord, for the staff members who have risked their lives to go out there to search and rescue and to try to help the families of western north Carolina. We thank you, God, that you'll continue to, Heavenly Father, help us pull them out of such a devastation, Lord. I pray, God, that tonight, as we do the people's business, Father, you give us wisdom. And, Father God, we pray that you just bless our county, you bless our nation, and you bless our leadership, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Amen.
Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner McClure, please?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Smith, would you lead the recognition off for Terry Ward, please?
I will, sir. And I don't know if Mr. Horn's here.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Come on forward. You probably do better at this than I can. Ms. Ward, one of our longtime employees, the Register of Deeds, been honored with a state award, and I'll let Michael go ahead and turn it over to him.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ms. Ward has been an employee of Davidson County for thirty-nine years and seven months. She has been an employee of the Register of Deeds for over thirty-six years. And when I became Register of Deeds, I made sure that, I tried to get all the training that I could, and through your support and the support of the county manager, that has been a success, and we do continue to train. But moreover, we have a retention rate of more than a year and a half. We haven't lost anyone. And that speaks volumes, not only of the county and what we're doing, but leadership. But speaking of leadership, it is, it is more than an honor for me to, every day, to work with Terry Ward. Terry is, is so, so knowledgeable, experienced, personable, that I wanted her to be recognized on a state level. The State Registers Association has a special award that no Register of Deeds can get, only an employee of a Register of Deeds. It's called the Charles Moore Award. There's only one recipient per year that receives this award. And it is more than an honor for me, as a recipient of Longleaf Pine, it's more of an honor for me to have this lady working for me that received this award. She is fantastic. I, I, what I would like to do, if I have time, if you'd allow me time, is I'll just read you what I wrote to the state to recommend her as the Charles Moore Award recipient.
That'd be good, do that, please.
Terry S. Ward became employed with the Davidson County on March first, nineteen eighty-five, after graduating King's College with a Secretarial Business Certification. Terry has over thirty-six years of experience in the Register of Deeds office. She truly is an integral part of the office and holds a vast knowledge of the laws, rules that govern its operations. On December third, twenty eighteen, Terry assumed the position of Assistant Register of Deeds. The position was demanding, but Terry's motto is, "We will not fail." Since then, Terry has completed supervisor leadership training, obtained her NIN card state certification, and demonstrated unmatched ability to supervise, lead, and support the entire office in every aspect. Terry is solely responsible for developing a detailed document recording process manual with examples of each document. The book contains over five hundred step-by-step pages which she has compiled over her years of service. Terry continually demonstrates her knowledge, dedication, determination, and a heart full of passion for her work and the customers associated with it. Terry's favorite task is delayed births. She is extremely diligent in trying to get everyone a birth certificate, and she calls them her babies. Terry is highly respected and has an exceptional rapport with attorneys as well as customers. In December of twenty twenty-one, the register fell severely sick with COVID. Without hesitation, Terry assumed complete command of day-to-day operations in the office. Terry supervised and maintained the office without incident or fail for over two months. Due to Terry's professionalism, knowledge, years of experience, leadership skills, and selfless commitment, she truly exemplifies and reflects the example set by Charles W. Moore. Terry is one of only two non-registered members currently serving on the NIN card certification committee. She has been married for thirty-nine years, has two children, three grandchildren, and is actively involved in her church and community. That was the write-up that was submitted. It's voted upon by the Executive Board of the North Carolina Association of Registers of Deeds, and she was absolutely unanimously awarded this very prestigious award. She is the first employee in the Davidson County history of the Registers of Deeds office from, from Davidson County to receive any award, especially this prestigious award. She's also the first award recipient to be in the historic records of the Registers of Deeds Association. So it is my honor and my blessing to have her as my assistant, and for everything that this board and the county manager's office does to support my office, I sincerely thank you.
Thank you. Can you invite her up? Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to work here for so long. It's a long time. Let me get a picture.
Well, just a minute, Mr. Chairman, may I say something? Terry, I remember the day you came to work, and I'm a little bit ill at you because you don't age. And I seem to age, but congratulations.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, let's get a picture.
This is all my staff except for one which has a family situation, she's unfortunately not able to be here, but ladies, thank you so much for coming and supporting Terry as, as we all do.
All right, y'all step up this way and we'll get a picture. If you want the rest of the staff to get in it, or?
So, that's absolutely up to you guys.
That's up to, up to Terry there.
They sitting down real quick.
They sit down real quick.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three. Are you ready?
Come on up here, y'all ain't getting out that easy. Is this all of?
It's a good tape.
All of one?
It's a good tape.
Might have to spread out a little bit here so we, yep.
I'll shake him and see if I stung.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. I'll send you guys a picture.
I appreciate y'all.
Congratulations, Terry, thank you. That is awesome, thank you very much. Recognition of veterans, Mr. Shores, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any veterans with us in the house tonight? Any veterans, if you are here, please stand up, please stand up. Now, before you get sat down and comfortable again, if we've not given you one of these pins, would you please come up and let, let me give you one?
They have a, he's got a lapel pin for y'all.
If you, if you've not gotten one, please come up and let me give you a.
Come on up here and get one.
Yeah, yeah, come on up, you want to, you wanna hand them out down there? That'll work too, whatever works. He's coming to you there. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Shores. All right, anybody wishing to speak at public address, now not the public hearing, but we have a sign-up sheet over here for public address. This is not the one for the public hearing. Anybody wishing to do so, the sign-up sheet's right there. Okay, the adoption of the agenda, due to the public hearing, I'm asking the deliberation portion of the agenda be moved. Okay, are there any other additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right, here none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you want this on the clicker?
If you want to roll this way, that's fine.
Yeah, let's roll this way, and you put it down. Okay, public address. Jason, anybody on the public address sheet there?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, items for decision consent, all right, anything, anybody want to move anything off the consent agenda?
Seeing no changes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, item number nine A, proclamation, red ribbon week. I need to pick somebody to sign that one, do I?
Well, no, there's no one here to accept any of these, so all you guys are gonna need to do the mic thing on.
This motion approves the proclamation?
That, perfect, thank you.
Let's do them all three at one time. Do we want to discuss this resolution for the disaster relief funding? Do you know much about that, Casey?
No, sir.
Okay, that's just where FEMA don't have enough money.
Some of the projects.
For some of the projects, so let's just bundle them all in one, but I mean, I know what it is, and it's, we're just piggybacking on getting a resolution there, so. Can we put them all together, or you want to vote for each one of?
They were all considered together and just put it in each paragraph.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shell had already made a motion?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Nine A, nine B, and nine C, correct?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, that's good, okay. We'll move on to the public hearing part, if y'all will, we all neighbors in the room, let's try to be cordial to each other, and we have to consider some growth here, and...
I was about to sign up sheet.
Yeah, okay, and there's a sign-up sheet on the podium, so anyone that speaks, after I open the public hearing, just write your name and your address on the sign-up sheet, we'll have that sign-up sheet there at the counter. I would like for you to announce your name, who you are, and where you live, but again, write it down, so. Mr. Crook, if you would like to, when you get settled in, to introduce the application, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would like to make note that the, on the agenda tonight, this, this application's gone through several iterations and changes. It's showing on the agenda tonight as RA two, RA one, excuse me, to HI, that has been changed, RA one to CZLI, Conditional Zoning Limit in Industrial District, I wanted to announce that. We have... Um, we have a request tonight by Davidson Craven LLC to rezone properties located in Conrad Hill Township, Tax Map sixteen, Lot twenty-eight, Tax Map twenty, Lots two and seven, Tax Map thirty-one, Lots fourteen and fifteen, containing two-hundred-and-ninety-five-point-three-five acres, more or less. Said properties are located on the east side of New Bowers Road, touching said road at point five-five miles, one-point-oh-seven miles, and one-point-five-two miles south of the East US Highway sixty-four intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA one and RA two, rural agricultural districts, to that of CZLI, Conditional Zoning Limited Industrial District. And I would also like to, uh, bring to the attention of everyone in the room that there's a little bit of housekeeping, um, there is a one-point-oh-seven, if you'll divert your attention to the, uh, overhead, there's a, a one-point-oh-seven acre track right here that is being requested by the applicant to be taken out of the request. That is the, um, the wall of the Look-a-Bill Wall Cemetery, and they want to exclude that from the rezoning request in the attempt to go to CZLI tonight. Um, Mr. David Anabinett and Jonathan Smith and their team are here to introduce the application, and once the, uh, public hearing's open, I'll yield the floor to them.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, so whichever one wants to come up first and, uh, explain the, the request.
Thank you, members of the board. May I approach and share with each of you a packet that contains some of the information we'll be sharing tonight?
And somebody done switched chairs on me, so if I look like I'm gonna fall out tonight of this chair.
Hey, you gotta take your turn with the bag, too.
Y'all get a big laugh.
Amen. I haven't touched them.
Thank you.
I ain't so sure if it's any better or worse.
This is better.
Really?
Yeah.
I'll try it till I fall out one time.
It's good with me.
I'm good for the time being, this crowd needs a good laugh tonight, I'm sure, so...
Good evening, I'm David Anabinett with Frankly-Walster Stoner Law Firm here in Lexington, and I represent Davidson Craven LLC in seeking rezoning of the properties contained in the application that you have before you. Tonight, myself, along with, uh, Jonathan Smith, uh, manager of Davidson Craven, and other members of the Davidson Craven team, will share how their plans for this site will promote and ensure the public's health, safety, and general welfare, along with how this developer's plans carry out Davidson County's longstanding intent and purpose of a comprehensive plan of development along the I-85 sixty-four corridor. I do want to take a moment and just thank, uh, your planning staff for allowing us additional time over the summer to, uh, amend our application, as Mr. Crook said, to make it better, to revise our original request, which was originally heavy industrial, uh, to limited industrial, to address traffic concerns through the addition of an access point closer to the Highway sixty-four, eighty-five interchange, and to even further revise our application to conditional zoning limited industrial, as was also mentioned, adding some additional conditions which will reduce the impact upon nearby residential property owners. As I think you'll see, our application certainly carries out the intent and purpose of this county's comprehensive plan, which has been in place for over twenty years. And I'm gonna focus my next few comments on the items behind tab number one, which has excerpts from your land development plan. Davidson County's land development plan contains specific objectives, as you know, encouraging investment from new and expanding industries, which diversify the local economy, train a more highly skilled labor force, and increase the per capita income. Your development plan also encourages reuse of currently unused or underutilized sites and infrastructure, much of which this board has installed within this economic growth corridor long ago to facilitate this very type of development. Sewer has been installed by the county to serve this and surrounding properties in what you have identified in your plan as an industrial and commercial center at this location. And we are informed and understand that there are current plans for additional sewer upgrades and a pump station near this site, which are in the design process. You all may recall that you approved an allocation of a hundred thousand gallons per day of wastewater treatment capacity to this site in May of twenty twenty-three. So, you have already identified industrial use as an appropriate and a desired designation for this property even, uh, over a year ago. Davidson Craven's plans for the site satisfy the objectives contained within Article seven of your land development plan and many of the, uh, underlying policies within it. In keeping with this longstanding commercial focus along the Highway sixty-four corridor and especially at the eighty-five, uh, sixty-four interchange, Davidson Craven's proposed site is certainly not an outlier in this area of the county, as there are multiple tax parcels currently zoned for industrial or commercial uses either adjacent to or within a one-to-two-mile radius of this site. And all of that reflects the changed or changing conditions of this section of the county. And the very last page in, behind tab number one, shows a map with a zoning overlay. Our site is outlined in dark red, but you'll see either adjacent to or within a short distance of it, multiple other sites which are already zoned heavy industrial, uh, limited industrial, highway commercial, and I believe office and institutional. One of those is a site under development by Davidson Craven, immediately north of the one we're before you on tonight, which was rezoned heavy industrial in twenty twenty-two. As you're aware, nearly a thousand acres within a mile of our site owned by Corrigan Grange and Bradshaw was rezoned over the summer to limited industrial. New Core, uh, which you're familiar with, is a short distance up Highway sixty-four, also was rezoned to heavy industrial in twenty twenty-two. And another neighboring four-acre property just northwest of ours was just approved by this board on September the twenty-third for rezoning to highway commercial in order to accommodate a proposed hotel and convenience store just across New Bowers Road from this site. In fact, I wanted to just sort of share, uh, the wording and the exact recommendation by your staff for approval of that site, since it happened so recently, uh, that was approved by this board five to zero. The recommendation was as follows, Davidson County's land development plan designates the area around East US Highway sixty-four and I-85 interchange as a growth corridor, urging the county to encourage non-residential development of a diversified nature at this location. Said plan identifies the East US sixty-four and eighty-five intersection as a commercial and industrial center. Continued economic growth is anticipated at this intersection. And your staff noted a total of fourteen policies under your land development plan which supported that request to highway commercial, which you approved a few weeks ago. Davidson County is now experiencing the growth that has long evaded us as commercial sites in our neighboring counties along highway corridors are becoming more scarce. The Highway sixty-four corridor is one that you have long identified for such growth. While job creation of all types is welcomed, we know that highly trained, highly skilled, highly paid jobs are what is needed to truly sustain a community in the twenty-first century. Jonathan Smith of Davidson Craven will share with you tonight the plans for positive economic improvements which this site will provide to Davidson County, and the recognition, uh, if you're not aware of it, that this site has already received by authorities at the state and local level, uh, for its promise. So, at this time, I would like to reintroduce to you Jonathan Smith, manager of Davidson Craven and a Davidson County native himself, along with Cliff Lawson and Brian Crutchfield of the Timmons Group, who are with us tonight. Uh, the Timmons Group is a professional engineering and design firm that provides site engineering and planning services to hundreds of developers and industries and property owners nationwide. And both Cliff and Brian are key advisors in this site's development. And after Jonathan shares more about the vision and potential of this site in serving the changing conditions and carrying out the purposes of your development plan, I would like for Cliff and Brian to share information about how concerns around increased traffic and eliminating environmental impacts are also being addressed. So, at this time, I would like to ask Jonathan to come forward and share more about his plans and vision for the site. Um, he has some slides up on the screen that he will share, and most of those are behind tab number two in your, in your, uh, packet, so you can also refer to those there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you all for giving us the time, um, on the agenda tonight. My name's Jonathan Smith, uh, I live in, uh, Forsyth County, I'm a Davidson County native, um, our firm is Davidson Craven, and we, um, develop Class A industrial, uh, product, uh, throughout North Carolina, primarily in the I-85 corridor between, um, between Charlotte and Raleigh, um...
Excuse me, excuse me one second, Jonathan. Can everybody hear Jonathan? Can you pull the mic a little closer and...
Sorry.
Yeah.
Can you start over?
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind, I can get everybody to hear us here so we can...
Uh, my name's Jonathan Smith, our firm is David, the name of our firm is Davidson Craven, um, I live in Forsyth County, I'm a Davidson County native, and our firm develops Class A industrial product, uh, in the I-85 corridor between Charlotte and Raleigh, um, and, and this, we are, as David mentioned, um, already developing the thirty-five acre site at the interchange of, of sixty-four and, um, and eighty-five at New Bowers, which, as he mentioned, is heavy industrial, which is not what we're pursuing tonight.
Can you, can you tell us what Class A is? I mean, I'm gonna interrupt you a little bit, so...
Absolutely.
If that don't bother you a little bit, so...
Uh, that's great, um... Left and right? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna s-...
And I guess there's a difference between Class A, Class B, and...
What, correct. And I'm, I'd like to show you some photos of, of our other buildings in similar locations, that'll be helpful to answer your question.
And if I'm messing you up, you can go on with your, uh, you know...
Uh, we, um, Class A...
To toggle back and forth, Mr. Smith, you go there, to advance was on the right side, to go back is on the left side, right? Those two buttons right there.
Okay, thank you.
And the laser is right there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, th- this is an example of one of our product, our, our, our properties, this is a six-building park, very close to the Greensboro Airport, is actually a High Point address, and Class A, um, is, is, is light industrial warehouse, um, best-in-class features, modern clear heights and building standards, um, that would be attractive to, um, employers, um, manufacturing and, and high-quality employers, and product that is also, um, uh, of interest to, uh, institutional investors, life insurance companies, large, um, lar- large capital, um, sophisticated capital sources, so, long way of saying it, it's, it's nice progress.
Nice buildings, natural buildings.
That's right. This is a, um, a, a, uh, North American headquarters that we're building for a Belgian furniture company, this is also in that, that same park at the Greensboro Airport with the High Point address. This will, um, this will be their, uh, North American office headquarters, but also their showroom for Furniture Market and their distribution center. That's a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot building. It's almost complete, uh, which I had a photo of it. This is, um, this is the same park, we've included this photo because it, the landscaping is representative of the, um, of, of what is standard for our development parks, and also what your staff has asked us to, to, um, highlight in, in our, our screening, uh, adjacent to other uses. These are, this is Rock Creek Center on I-40 between Greensboro and Raleigh, uh, the building on the right is a, uh, a company, our tenant is a, is pre, the name of the company is Pre-Packet, is also a furniture manufacturer, uh, from, from the west coast of Canada, that's a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-square-foot building, and then the pad next to it under construction is a one-hundred-thousand-square-foot building for the same company. This is a two-hundred-thousand-square-foot building that we developed in Research Triangle Park, it's actually in, in, in the park itself, RTP, at the intersection of TW Alexander Drive and, and I-40, um, right, in the same location where the Durham Freeway ties back into I-40. Um, but, of course, that's, that's our intersection, um. It became clear to us, as we became involved with the first thirty-five acre site at, at New Bowers, that this property was going to be developed, um, and in fact, we were, were aware of, of our out-of-market competitors from big cities, Atlanta, Dallas, New York, that were interested in this site and, and similar sites. Um, so we certainly recognize that, um, it's a beautiful part of the world, and, and, and a lot of our neighbors would prefer, um, for it not to be developed, but we, um, we recognize that it would be and, and, um, and certainly appreciate our opportunity to bring a local development team to this process and, and, um, and try to be as sensitive as possible to the community. It's a, uh, one big reason we hired Timmons Group to be our engineering partner on this, and recognizing that this particular group was the same team that worked with the city of Greensboro in the assemblage and entitlement and development of the Toyota, um, mega-site just east of us, um, south of, um, or, or near Ashborough. Um, so we, we, we brought our Timmons representatives here to speak to some of the, the engineering that we've done, um, to ensure that, that we are doing everything necessary to mitigate traffic impact of this development, um, stormwater, uh, and, and wetlands issues, and, you know, a comprehensive engineering analysis.
I got you. Any questions, uh, for Jonathan from colleagues here?
How many jobs are you expecting this facility to produce?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The facility that you're looking at building, how many jobs are we talking about?
We, um, e- extrapolating the, the number of jobs associated with our prior projects, it, we're anticipating it could be three thousand plus.
Starting salary?
I don't have that information, I'd have to coordinate with that.
About minimum wage here in Davidson County?
Oh, yes.
Okay. The entrance way to where you're projecting, how far down Bowers Road from sixty-four is that?
We are very close to our existing development, which was one of the, one of the, um, items we, we spent working on this summer. So, the primary entrance for the park will be, uh, uh, not the direction, but the, the, the area where New Bowers Road almost touches I-85.
Can you put your laser on? There you go.
Yeah, there, that's it. And that's a, that's a hundred feet wide, very, plenty of room for, for, um...
Traffic and traffic.
Road, and that would be the primary entrance for the park.
Now, that's your only entrance, correct?
We would have a secondary entrance further up New Bowers Road, the next point it touches, thank you, that would be the secondary entrance, and, um, there may be a minor entrance at the third touch point of New Bowers Road in the future, but as you can see, there's a stream that impacts that, so that's not a practical access for us, for, 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 for major traffic.
Yeah, he can't, they can't see the pointers, I'm sorry, it don't show up on the TV, so if you want to move up here, you can look, and that's about the best I can tell you, that's, uh...
We don't have a mouse pointer, we can highlight.
It don't work, it don't work on the TV, the pointer don't work on...
Can you move this?
Oh, move the TV out the way?
That's much better, thank you.
Uh, yeah. All right, so let me tell you, wanna, we go and get on to the chase, okay, if you're okay with that?
Sure.
Uh, you know, some of the concerns I've heard about is the, the other entrances down New Bowers, so, early on, I'd like to see if there's any concessions you can make to do away with those entrances. I thought maybe this had already been discussed somewhere about no entrances that far down New Bowers Road, so...
There, there were some discussions between the applicant and staff, uh, with respect to, they've already... already agreed to a condition to delete the use of this, which was kind of a no-brainer. That is...
Timber View?
Timber View, yeah. And this one, we discussed this, they didn't want to enter into a condition, because any condition that's agreed to is enforceable by the planning department, and they didn't know what the future held. That is open for discussion. It would be between the board and the applicant to determine that. To answer Commissioner Shores, this is .55 miles from the entrance right here.
What?
Right there.
But he talked about those other two.
1.87 miles.
There hadn't been a previous discussion to block them out. You might as well take all of New Bowers Road. You gonna do that?
But you're, that's, yeah. So I mean, that's...
Before we get that deep into it, what I'd like to ask you, if there's any concessions that you could take those two entrances out, again...
Sure, yes.
Cliff Lawson is the traffic engineer with Timmons.
And I understand a traffic engineer, but that ain't what I'm asking here, okay?
Yeah, well, what I wanted to, I guess, point out is based off the traffic, it's unlikely that the NCDOT, who owns the facility, will allow one entrance. So that, that's kind of the primary concern there from a traffic perspective. After a certain number of trips, you have to, you have to have two entrances.
How much?
We only have one in our industrial park and it's 500 acres, so...
That must be a lot of traffic.
Right. So the study itself was done based off of two access points that, you know, that was part of the scoping items at the very beginning. So any changes to access type, you would have to go through DOT approval, but again, for something that's, you know, typically for this level of trips, two entrances at least would be needed for it to operate efficiently.
Jonathan, I'll be honest with you, we may have a real big issue if we can't get it down to one entrance, you know? So, we gotta try to make some concessions for these folks in the room and...
Sure.
And I know you're probably willing to do that if you can. If you can't, you can't.
Yes, sir.
Again, I don't know how the rest of my board feels or whatever, but...
I agree. I think we can do this without infringing on the rights of our neighbors.
Sure.
It's like, you know, we start producing something and...
I'm sorry?
It's like we start trying to produce something with that, with little regard as to how it affects the surrounding population. We're only concerned about what our goal is and I don't agree with the second and third entrance at all.
Well, I totally understand the concern and the question. Just to jump to the chase again, it is not possible to eliminate the second. The third, again, we do not anticipate being a important part of the development. Reluctant to give it up completely because I think the ultimate objective would be able to access the land that is on the left side of the creek, but not use that entrance as a point to access the rest of the acreage. It's not practical to do so, so that's not our intent, so...
This is the main one.
That's just completely honest answer, our view of entrance number three. Entrance number two, as Cliff said, I don't think that we would be able to permit development without that one.
Can you see it on the map, sir? I don't know, I don't know where you... It's on New Bowers. And we'll get to y'all, we'll get to that in a minute from you guys, but if you will, look at the map so you see, and then during the public hearing part, you can get up and show us where you live and... I'm sorry? Okay. When you come up, you gonna come up and speak a little bit later, ma'am? You don't have to sign up. There'll be a form right there you can sign up on. So as the public speaks, we'll get you to sign up and we'll let them, you can tell us where you live and we'll look at it on the map to see where it affects you, okay?
I'm wondering, will we get to speak soon?
Well, as soon as we get through here in the presentation and we get through with the questions that we have. I'm sorry?
We've heard a lot about the developments so far and it would be nice if we could all speak and talk about...
Well, you can, soon as we get through here, because we haven't heard this, so we're trying to hear. And then once we get through here and we get through with our questions, we'll invite the public up to here, okay? So, all right, so the main entrance is there. Anybody that didn't see it, you can look on the map if you understand the map. If not, we'll show you later.
And as David mentioned...
Where's that main entrance again?
You see it right there?
Just as soon as you get off of it, the plan that's already developed.
It's not, you see the map?
The intersection of 64 and New Bowers is here.
That's where it's here.
No, sir. New Bowers and 64 is right here. This is the property that's already been graded and already been zoned. The proposed entrance is gonna be right here. I think this is on the Davis, the Davis property. I do have, before...
Go ahead.
No, I do have another economic development point I meant to make earlier.
Excuse me, can y'all keep it quiet, please? We got a meeting.
I know this access issue is very important and we're not finished talking about that, but I did forget to mention that this site has also been, as your county managers know, this site has been through the North Carolina Economic Development Partnerships Site Readiness Program, Select Site Readiness Program. It was a finalist for that site, I mean, for that program. That program was intended to pre-qualify and endorse industrial sites for economic development throughout North Carolina. And so we have a report and feedback and they came to this community, met with us, met with your county staff, met with utility providers to discern the availability of the necessary elements for, to make it a viable development. That's another, in our development world, having the economic development stamp of approval is important. And I neglected to mention that.
I appreciate that, that you would bring that up, but that doesn't matter to me. A hell of beings hearing from the community and the concerns that they have and talking about properties from Greensboro to Charlotte, right near the airport, that's different than rural Davidson County with farmhouses all around it and a little two-lane road.
Please, keep the clapping down, okay? We're not gonna have any clapping. You just don't do that, okay?
I'm like the chairman. I think we need to, we need to find out what we need to do with some entrance.
I'm sorry? Excuse me, Chris, somebody was talking, I'm sorry, did somebody say something? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just told him I agree with you, that we need to figure out something with the entrance. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Hopefully, like I say, we can get some compromise here. I mean, I really want it. Our young folks need jobs and we need growth in the county, some growth, and not old homes is my thing. I talked to somebody on the phone today. I mean, I'm not looking, I'd sure hate to see somebody put 700 homes here and that can actually happen, so...
Sure.
Maybe these folks would rather have homes than they had businesses, but I'd rather have jobs for our kids and grandkids. But anyhow, any other questions for Jonathan while he's here? And we're gonna have to go back to probably some of these setbacks and some of the entrances or whatever, okay? I'm gonna try to get a compromise here between the public and us, okay?
Mr. Chairman, before you go to somebody else, could you just explain, so with it being zoned the way it is right now, there's no conditions that they could come in and build seven, that's 700 houses? They can build as many houses as they want?
I say 700. How many acres are they here?
The total request is 294.28 acres. That's 30,000 square foot per dwelling. I haven't run the numbers, but that's, that's a lot of houses.
Probably about 400. I missed it, maybe 400.
That's a lot.
Houses. So, and I'm sure there's probably people out there ready to jump on that, to put 400 houses in, and then you really are talking about traffic and strain on the infrastructure, so... And again, I guess they can build apartments or whatever they wanted to there as well, correct?
Well, under the current zoning, they could do duplexes on an acre of land with RA2 and RA1.
Okay. Duplexes and homes are permissible at this point.
And Mr. Chairman, maybe this is premature to bring this up. I know the staff will get to this. Part of our request for limited industrial, we have identified some conditional uses that would further, hopefully demonstrate to the, to the community that we do not intend to do offensive, to development. So that was a voluntary concession that we've already made.
And like I say, the audience, I mean, I've talked to some of them today and I've talked to some of them in the past, they've been told a chemical plant's coming here and they've been told this and that, and we just really need to get the record straight tonight exactly what we're gonna try to do.
Yes, sir, and that's exactly what we were attempting to do with the conditional uses.
Right.
Thank you.
And so, any other questions? Mr. Mazzella, would you like to have a question?
Yeah, I'll say a good question. I'm just curious about the timetable for the setup and building of all these plans. Like, are we doing like the next... Can you hear me now? Okay. I have to use my teacher voice. So one of my questions was, what is the timetable in terms of getting some of this infrastructure set up? Like, are we talking next five years? Are we talking 10 years? Is it a phased approach? What are we, what are we looking at in that regard?
That's a very good question and we would like it to be a short timeframe because it's expensive to own land and to wait. However, this is a very long-term project. We're viewing it as every bit of a 10-year project and it's impossible to really handicap how quickly that goes because of economic cycles. But as you know, we graded the first site 18 months ago and, you know, things have been quiet in the economy, so we've not been able to develop. But, so I do think it is very fair and honest to view this as a long-term project. Thank you.
That is a good question. All right, Ms. Watson?
I got one, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith, on this, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're basically gonna build a shell building and then I move my company into it. Is that what you're saying? Or do I contact you and say, I wanna purchase this and then you build the building the way I want it built?
A little bit of both. And sometimes it depends on where that demand comes from. If it comes from an economic development agency at the state or similar, that may, a lot of times that's more of a custom build, because you have XYZ company that wants to locate in North Carolina or a particular part of North Carolina and they're looking for a site that meets their needs and a labor force that meets their needs, and it would be more of a custom build situation that the company might own at the end of the day, like Egger or Nucor or something like that. Our company also builds, to the first part of your question, shells, boxes that are unoccupied and not leased, and those recruit companies to occupy them and they will lease from us. And almost, almost all of our companies who lease our buildings are coming from, they're inbound, it's new investment to the community. So, and it's a combination of light assembly, light manufacturing, warehousing, not heavy industrial.
And the second piece of that, and maybe Mr. Cook needs to answer this, but is there stipulations on what kind of company can go there? Can you put a chemical plant there? Or does it have to be like a warehouse or an office space?
Okay, good question, Commissioner Shores. What the applicant has done is they, as a condition in the proposal, they wish to adopt the Table of Permitted Uses for Limited Industrial Zoning. They have also agreed to exclude a certain number of uses that are part of that list. That exclusion reads as airport, general aviation, these are things you, they do not want in the park, amateur radio, ham tower, an arena, automobile body shop, auto car wash, carnival fairgrounds, drive-in theater, junk motor vehicle accessory use, junkyard, automobile graveyard, landfill greater than 10 acres, landfill less than 10 acres, recycling drop-off center, wastewater treatment plant. Now, a, there's a list of limited industrial allowed uses in your packet. The chemical plant or the chemical company, I do not think that's allowed in your HI, I mean, in your LI.
It's not, it'd have to be HI.
Yeah, it would have to be HI. So as this application evolved, it originally started out as RE1, RE2 to HI. Then in communication with the applicant, it went to RE1, RE2 to LI, and then we talked about RE1, RE2 to CZ LI. That gives us our full spectrum of tools to try to reach a compromise so that we can have, if the board wants to see buffers close to existing residential development, we can design buffers. If we can, you know, negotiate entrances, we can talk about anything we need to talk about and adopted conditions under this action, if it's approved, then become subject, it's part of the zoning district and it is then subject to Article 8 compliance of the zoning ordinance. That way, our office can enforce these conditions that are agreed upon at any time we're made aware that there's a violation of them.
That answer your question?
It did. One last one, Mr. Chairman, and I'll leave it alone.
Keep rolling, I'm sure anything you asked...
Mr. Cook, just for the audience and the people listening, the CZ, if I'm remembering the way we've done this in the past, means that if they was to sell this property or whatever, that does not go with it. The new people would have to come in and get that same one or it goes with it.
It is, it sticks to the property. It does not stick to the owner. If Mr. Smith sells the property, if it's, if he's successful and he sells the project, these conditions go with the property. The next owner has to abide by the same set of conditions.
So, and you may sell some to somebody? Would you sell a truck and let them build their own building?
In, yes, in certain circumstances, there will be some of that.
So those conditions would pass along to that owner, so...
Mr. Chairman, first of all, great question, Commissioner Shores. That brought up something that, that, you know, that I wanna find out. So if you don't, if you don't have a specific purpose for this facility, how can you measure how much traffic is gonna come in and out? Because we don't know what you're gonna provide. What is, is it a trucking company? Is it, is it, you know, something like that, dealing with the transportation of goods back and forth and that's what we're basing that off of? Because he had a very good question. You know, this very well could be a shell company and at the end of the day, you know, we could hear what we hear and then you just pick one of the...
I don't know if Mr. Timmons or Mr. Lawson will...
Do you have a specific business right now, ready to buy?
We do not.
Okay.
And that's, but we do know that the types of users that are permitted under this type of zoning, there are some rules of thumb for density of traffic that are associated with those uses. So we don't know exactly, but we, we have a good idea of the representative future demand for traffic. There's a 400-page traffic study associated with this application and condition five that's been submitted, the traffic impact analysis has been completed by a third-party traffic engineering consultant. Timmons Group has been reviewed and approved by NCDOT for the purpose, proposed scope of development. Development will meet or exceed offsite improvements required by NCDOT at each phase of development. That again, becomes subject to this district and enforceable, they, any person that owns property will have to abide by that traffic study if it's approved.
And no disrespect to staff, but the way, the way my brain is working right now is you don't have a purchaser right now or a plan for the site. So to just write off the communities want to cut off two entrances, that kinda seems, you know, like that, that might be a little early. It seems like you have something, a vision in mind, that you don't want to move to cut off the other entrance.
I'm sure they got averages. I'm gonna try to answer this for you because I know a little bit about this. They got averages for the amount of property and what they're trying to do with industry. I'm sure there's a formula somewhere that somebody looks at. Now whether they will sell one of the companies that's got 100 trucks coming in a day, or whether they'll sell a tract of land to where they got 100 cars coming in a day if it's a manufacturing plant with only five or 10 loads coming in a day. So, again, I think I was mentioning somebody today, nobody's got a crystal ball, he don't either. He's gonna look at the project and say, you know, it works here, it don't work here, you know?
Yes, sir. And just my concern, I drive a little Kia and my kids went to... And, and just my concern, I drive a little Kia and my kids went to Davis Townsend. I live on Old County Home Road. We would go down Old Sixty-four, New Bowers cut through, go through and, and that's a very small road.
Yes.
And it scares me just as being part of the community to know that these big trucks could take up the majority of the road using that other entrance and it just doesn't seem feasible to me.
Yes, sir, and maybe when Cliff gives his, his presentation, we...
And if you don't mind, we'll probably wait till we hear from the public because they'll be able to answer some of the questions they hear from the public and we'll just let them come and speak at the end. But, like I say, I think, you know, when we done the industrial park down at Egger, they told us they'd need five hundred trucks a day and I don't know how many comes in and out of there, but I've been in there a dozen times and I've probably never met a truck coming in and out. So, you know, I don't know if they do a hundred a day now or five hundred, but I think it was done on one of these studies. So are you good or do you want to speak to something else?
One more point.
Okay.
Thank you. If, we're gonna wait for the engineers to speak after the, the public, I would like to point out, because I'm sure this is a question that some folks will ask, our traffic study was performed during school, when school was in session, which I know is important. They're not allowed to do a traffic count by state law when school is not in session because it's not representative, but I'm, I'm sure that may be a question that will...
And I told somebody today, I mean, our job up here, we don't handle the traffic DOT does, you know? So if DOT approves y'all a permit to come up and down New Bowers Road, the studies that's been presented and DOT will make y'all do the improvements to New Bowers Road that needs to be done before they'll actually issue y'all a permit. Is that correct?
Correct, correct, yes, sir.
In the same way with the environmental stuff. If, if people in here ask about a creek or whatever, we don't do anything about creeks. North Carolina has a special department that handles the environmental aspect of it, Deener, and they will make sure that they abide by all the rules and regulations of, of water quality, so, and runoff and that kind of thing. So, again, that's above our pay grade. The state actually takes care of those issues.
If, if, if I'm correct about the map there.
Okay.
You got an island in the middle where the entrance way comes off, is, is that right?
Well, it don't show that on the map.
Right, down the center of that road, right there.
No, that's eighty-five out there, I think.
Yeah, right there is eighty-five.
Yeah, that's eighty-five.
Okay. So it's, it's... Lady's right, it's not a very good map.
Yeah, it needs to be, uh, it needs to be brought up a little bit bigger, but...
Yeah.
But no, now, I don't know, in, in your final designs of the entrance coming into the park, they may have, I don't know if it'll be a hundred foot wide of just pavement or they'll have an island in the middle with trees and curb and gutter and that type of thing. The last picture they showed had curb and gutter and that, those type things.
Yes, and when, when the engineers speak, they'll be able to address all of them.
But we definitely gonna get you back up and we'll, we'll get them up. But let's start this public hearing and, and if you don't mind, and we'll get some of these questions out. Go ahead, Dave.
As a request, it might be helpful, part of our presentation, to kind of get more information out, to educate both you and answer your questions and to share some information for the public would be to let the two fellows from Timmons be able to speak briefly if they might, if you would...
Okay. Well, I've heard that before and it never settles the questions that we hear from the public, but I'm fine with that, but they still gonna have...
Because they might have something that at least shares a little bit.
I'd rather them just address the questions that the public has, you know, I really do.
That's fine.
Is that good with the board? Yeah, because I mean, I've heard it before and like I say, they always go down the same rabbit trail, so we'll, we'll go. So let's kind of do this in order. I don't know if we want to start from the front or from the back and one at the time. All right, we're gonna start here on the left front, so, third row back. If you will, put your name down, tell us who you are, your address and how are you this evening?
I'm fine. I'm Lori Back. I live at three-two-seven, Dyers Place, Lexington.
Talked to you today, awesome.
Thank you. All right.
And you fellas may want to take some notes to address some of these concerns, okay?
Labor.
And I did speak with you, Mr. Yates, this afternoon and I appreciate that phone call back and some of the things we're talking about here tonight are coming out, I think, so...
That's right. Some of the concerns, yes ma'am, that's what we want to do.
I, I know that a lot of us here don't really want to see this. At the same time, we've been fighting this in some form or fashion since April. We're a bit weary, we're a bit tired and we come here tonight really thinking, okay, these two properties, these, the residential, the folks were here first, okay? And what they're planning to come in and build, they're not just super compatible. There's gonna need to be some concessions, but what I keep hearing from Davidson Craven is they want multiple access points. They don't want to go and get direct access off of Sixty-four, although there are properties available immediately in front of their property, the one on the edge. And I have a couple of other maps here. These were renderings that were Davidson Craven drawings, okay? They may not be indicative of what plans to go in there now.
All right.
Can I...
Yeah, if you don't mind, give Mr. Craven one there, or Jonathan one, too. And that way he can look at it and just bring it on up and pass it to us and start at that end or he can hand them out or whatever.
I don't think I can.
He just want to hand it to me, I'll pass them out, how about that? Okay. Debbie, did you get one? Yeah?
Yes.
So for everybody, if you don't mind, I'm gonna kind of tell them where your place is at because I talked to you. She's down at the very back, down at the bottom, at, right here at the three hundred thousand square foot building, at the very back, furthest away from New Bowers Road.
Right here, fifty-five?
I mean, all the way back from Sixty-four, the furthest you can get away from Sixty-four, that's her house, that little small house right there.
Mr. Chairman.
In the corner.
Right here.
Yes.
And the important thing is, I was hoping that you could pull it up, Mr. Crook.
I, I, this is my system, not yours.
Okay, is there a way you can email it to you?
Not, not, not right now, unfortunately, no.
Not in this amount of time we have, no matter.
All right.
So, but everybody kind of sees where you're at, the board does and...
Yeah, and I'm here arguing obviously for my situation, but I'm here arguing for these residents too, those that are here and those that aren't. Um...
And we're gonna hear from them too, hopefully, so...
Okay. Um, I, it's not that we're necessarily against growing and developing our county.
Awesome.
But we want it to be in such a way as the residents don't pay everything here. There needs to be concessions.
Okay.
When you think about Nucor, when you think about Phillip, Courier Properties, they both have requirements or they both have access directly to Sixty-four, okay? The hotel and the restaurant or the convenience store that was just approved, those were largely approved because it backed right up into the exit ramp off of eighty-five. We were told it had no residential value, you weren't gonna build residences there. So what else would you do with that property? So when looking at those properties and those requirements for that property, you look at this and this is different. This is a different consideration than those. The residences are here, they're all along New Bowers Road and instead of, we're coming across right here, that yellow line, that's across the Danae Davis property or the Mary Davis property, right there. Right here is right below Timber Ridge and right down here, which is over a mile and a half down New Bowers Road, that comes in on the Mark Class properties, right by your mother-in-law. It's not necessary to have three access points down New Bowers Road. It just doesn't make sense. It is not being a corporate neighbor, which Davidson Craven has alleged to be here, and we want them to have the same requirement, come off of Sixty-four. The question has been asked in previous planning and zoning meetings, why they're not coming across, you know, directly from Sixty-four and taking all of this off of New Bowers Road, not creating a safety or a hazard for our families.
Right.
Come off of Sixty-four. And we were told that it was cost prohibitive. Now, I contend that's not a good enough reason to come down with three access points. And if you look at the staff analysis that was done by Mr. Crook and Mr. Leonard's office or from the Planning and Zoning Board, it clearly says that the applicant's request is different since it does not have direct access to US Highway Sixty-four and it's somewhat more visible to the surrounding community. They also go on in their analysis to say that the applicant's property has access at three locations along New Bowers Road. Those, those are at point five-five miles, one point oh-seven miles and one point five-two miles down into the community, down New Bowers Road.
You know, we'll, we'll talk about those entrances for sure. I mean, I've already mentioned that earlier, so, you know, we'll definitely discuss those entrances earlier or later on. Now, I do want to ask staff a question. If this was to go residential, they would not need our approval for DOT for an entrance or anything, right? They can put all three entrances in or...
Yeah, every, every entrance would be subject to a DOT driveway permit, but the zoning would not need to be changed. It'd be a technical review through the subdivision regulations to, to develop it residentially and for a major subdivision.
And would water and sewers be made readily available?
Well, that...
Available.
There, there's sewer there now and, and there, there's an additional line coming from Thomasville. The, the connection policy has not been developed for that yet. Some of the connection policies, like for the Winston line, they do allow residential, some of them like the Lexington because it's limited, does not allow residential. Thomasville is kind of in the middle. It will be up to the sewer service, sewer facilities committee and the Board of Commissioners to adopt a policy to, to say whether residential development will be allowed on, on that million gallons a day that's coming from Thomasville. So it may or may not be available.
So, but the sewer's already to the site, so it would just need to be approved for a residential subdivision if this don't go through. So I'm just, I'm following up with you, I'm playing devil's advocate here about, you know, they don't need our permission to put three entrances in if this goes residential. Now again, I'm gonna try to work with Mr. Smith here and see if we can find some happy medium and maybe all of us can live through this, you know? Y'all don't try to shoot arrows at us in the parking lots, so...
Now, I contend that the way they should do that is if they want second entrance there off of Miss Danae Davis's property, fine, but come off of Sixty-four.
Well, but they don't own the property out on Sixty-four, so...
No, they don't, but it's available.
There's a difference. Well, it could be, but yeah, you, you know, we can't make people buy a piece of land...
But they come in at three access points because they don't, they don't want to pay the money for it and they're not gonna make as much profit. I'm, I'm sorry, that's...
And like I say, I, I hear you because it's a residential area, I hear you and there's a lot of trucks going up and down New Bowers and...
Well, we're trying to be compatible here. I mean, the conversation we had this afternoon, but that's not what we're hearing from the other side.
And like I say, hopefully we can meet somewhere in the middle. Let's, let's hope we can get somewhere, okay? Because again...
I don't know where that middle is, but I'm...
Oh, we'll see, we'll see.
We'll go past that. Um, um...
And I don't mean to interrupt you here, but I'm just trying to play devil's advocate as we go so you understand what we up against, you know?
And I'm also just throwing out that there's a way avenues to get there.
Right, I got you.
Um, and if we want to talk about being compatible, which is what I think that was being alleged by the Planning and Zoning Board analysis, and again, they talk about the topography of the entrance there off of where the Mark Class property is not being suitable for an entrance way. Otherwise, to come in at the other entrance point, the second one, is right by Timber View subdivision, right underneath it, right across from, um, is it Curry Logging?
It's up a little bit more, oh, is that it across the street?
That's the second, that's across, across from Mr. Curry's.
Right, across the street.
Yeah, right here, Mr. Curry's.
That's at the logging company, June Bugs, yeah.
Yep.
That's about as much impact to the residents as you can get, um, right by them. And I would just encourage you to continue to read this, I don't need to read this to you, but it's their suggestion, and please, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Lee, was to keep the traffic toward that one half mile from the Davis entrance back towards Sixty-four. I think that was one of the goals that they were aiming for. And of course, what we're hearing tonight is, no, no, we want multiple access points all the way down New Bowers Road. And Mr. Elliott, you put it well, why not just take all of, you know, New Bowers Road if you're gonna do that? That will lead to widening New Bowers Road, putting traffic on that road that we don't need. The entrance at the Davis property, to be honest with you, is in a curve. So you're gonna have vision problems with the entrance and exit there as well.
But again, now, remember DOT's involved in that, so if they approve a entrance there, then DOT has already done the study and, and figures it would be safe there, so...
I just would invite you to drive it.
I have, I, I got a friend of mine lives right there by it, so...
I just, I'd invite you to drive it. The other thing I want to talk about is, and again, this is being compatible and I don't know that this changes, or my thoughts on this change based upon what I'm hearing tonight about three entrances, but as conditional zoning requests, we would like to have in that zoning request the condition so that we're not ten years, this is gonna be a ten-year project, arguing about this ten years from now.
Now, we'll fix it tonight if we, if this goes through.
And buffers.
That's our intentions, too.
Yeah, buffers and I think it's been proposed that, again, this was by Mr. Crook's office, you know, residents aren't compatible with what they're planning and to be compatible, they need enhanced heavy screening and landscaping, berms, controls as to buildings, orientation, lighting controls and access points. All of that's listed in their analysis. So if this rezoning is approved, this enhanced buffering should be included as a condition. They're only proposing very limited buffering in, I mean, limited buffering in two places. Happens to be along a side that is near my home, but also underneath the Timber View, the Timber View subdivision, just underneath that. And it's between fifty to a hundred feet and there was at the Planning and Zoning Board additional conversations about berms and the combination of shrubs, foliage, berms sufficient. I would say as a resident in just those two places that they're talking about offering it, we should have at least two hundred feet. And I don't think that's too much to ask for since of that whole thing that they have, those are the only two places that they proposed it. And I don't know how you can say, "I'm not gonna operate any business here that's not gonna result in a noise nuisance or a light nuisance without that." You need it to reduce the noise. For us to all be compatible, you're gonna need to do that. I would also like to know if they're gonna operate businesses or they're gonna seek out businesses that run three or four shifts a day so that we're running trucks all through the night. I mean, is that the type of client that they're looking to put into these buildings? We haven't heard anything about that or to, I have not heard anything about that.
Lee, can you go to this slide? Is that the, is that the...
And again, just so you know, they just explained it a while ago, they don't know exactly yet what kind of businesses are coming in. Again, this is a...
Even more reason to have it in the conditions so that if you get, so if you get that five hundred truck business versus the hundred cars or whatever the analogy was a while ago, you have it there where you've got that buffer and you've got that berm. We didn't talk about type of berms or anything of that nature, I'm sorry. But it's important that to us it be in the conditions. As neighbors, we want to know what we can expect and what we can rely on and I don't think that's too much to ask. And you guys sit up here and you hear these and I hope you recognize that this is a different request. I understand, we may not want houses, but this is our opportunity to tell you what we need to make it compatible and I don't think we're being unreasonable.
Um, do you want houses there?
I don't, I, I don't want something right on top of my house with transfer trucks driving by the window every day either. driving by the window every day either, but I don't think that that's my call today.
And, and I'm just asking you, I mean, would you rather have houses?
I-
You know, we don't allow anything, excuse me, and I'm not gonna take a lot of questions from the audience, but we don't allow houses. As long as they pass the North Carolina Building Code, and as long as they meet the requirements, we don't have any control of that. People's gotta have a place to live, okay? And they might not fit our or mine. I live out in the country, I'm on ten acres, and I realize most of y'all are, too. And that's not the way I want to live, but a lot of people do live that way, and that's what they like. But again, we can't control any of that. We, you know, that would not be, uh, fair for us to do. But anyhow, we do hear you, and I understand about the setbacks, and we'll get there, and Mr. Smith and his team has heard, so we'll cover that, okay?
Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you, and I want Michael to raise his hand, because I talked, okay, all right. I talked to him earlier on the phone today, too. He looked familiar to me, who I'm trying to-
Kirby Canoy.
Kirby, I've met you somewhere, I don't know where.
First of all, let me say I appreciate you folks allowing us to come tonight. I know your nights are probably much more busier than most of ours since you get tied up with a lot of things. I'd like to follow up on what Lori has been saying. Uh, the people that did the traffic study, are any of those people here?
Here they are.
Did you do a traffic study for Robert Beck Road?
Oh, no, sir.
Did you do a traffic study for Smith Road?
So, I'll explain the-
No, I'm just asking a question, you have to go.
I, we completed the traffic study according to what any DOT told us to. I don't dictate what-
Okay, so a traffic study was not done for Smith Road or Robert Beck Road? The main entrance that it looks like that's coming tonight, uh, looks like it's gonna be right there at my mother-in-law's property, which is almost all the way down New Bowers Road.
Can you show that to us on the map there?
Uh, who's your mother-in-law, sir?
Peter Smith.
Um-
Eight-eight-eight, New Bowers Road.
Okay, this, this main entrance up here is, is at like twelve, uh, twelve-something New Bowers. There's a, there's a residence across the street.
How, how close, this is your mother-in-law, Kirby?
Yes, it's, it's where the, it's where the property ends, it's next to the Class property.
Okay, it's all the way down at the bottom, um, so put your pointer down there at the bottom of Class's property. Ms. Class, right there, is it somewhere right there? Is it down, down past that?
Which entrance is there? There's a, there's an entrance supposed to be there, correct?
There were signs out there, is it close to one of the signs? The, the, the furthest sign away from sixty-four is right here. That's the last, that's the one point five-seven mile.
You say it's close to Ms. Class's land, that was, uh-
It's next door to it.
Yeah.
Okay, my point is, is wherever you have the entrance, it looks like it's gonna be way down New Bowers Road, either halfway or not. And it looks like, based on what I saw in reading some of the reports, that you're gonna have going back towards New sixty-four, it's at a hundred-foot exit to get out, going the other direction, which is south, was two hundred foot. That's gonna send them down towards Old sixty-four. Well, you know that those trucks are not only want to go down Old sixty-four, they're gonna want to cut through Smith Road, they're gonna want to cut through Robert Beck Road. Robert Beck Road has four major curves on it, it's very narrow, very dangerous, children there, school buses go that direction. Smith Road has two major curves on it, and at the top of the hill at the crest is where all the housing, the forty new houses with all those children are getting on a bus. Very dangerous, very dangerous if you've got big trucks going. Also, we still have farming going out there. We lease some of our land to farmers, and they have big equipment, and when they get on that road, the big truck's gonna want to get by, well, he can't get by. So, what that brings us up to is, you're gonna have to widen New Bowers Road. If you widen New Bowers Road, you're gonna take property not only from the property owner, but you're gonna devalue their property because it's gonna have to be widened. That doesn't make sense.
So, let me ask you a question. Do you have land on New Bowers?
I own land on New Bowers Road, Robert Beck Road. My mother-in-law owns land on New Bowers Road, two different tracks, another track off of it, and also on Smith Road.
So, where's your land on New Bowers?
My land is two, is two houses, the one ha- next to Ms., Ms. Smith, eight, three, four, New Bowers Road.
I got you. Um, how many acres you got over there?
We've got three point seven, and then, how mu- Dan, how much is your mom?
Six and five.
Yeah. Six and five, and it's still a farm.
Yeah.
And then, we've got ten acres on Robert Beck Road, and she's got about, what, Dan, on, uh, Smith Road, about fifteen? Twenty-six acres on Smith Road. So, my point is, is, is you're not just affecting New Bowers Road, which you're affecting a lot, you're gonna be affecting, affecting Robert Beck Road, you're gonna be affecting Smith Road. So, what's the next level? Well, we're gonna have to widen those two roads, so the DOT's gonna be widening roads forever. Now, the gentleman spoke a moment ago and said you're gonna have three thousand jobs. How many automobiles are gonna be coming in and out if you've got three thousand jobs out there?
Probably, probably three thousand.
Three thousand, exactly right, plus all the big trucks. So, where are they going?
Unless-
So, let's go back to New sixty-four.
Unless they-
I have spoken to one of the property owners next to Modern Tire. They have not been contacted about purchasing any of their land. And some people said, well, they got a creek out there. Well, build a road across the creek. And to answer your question about homes, I'm not sure everybody here would want homes, but the point is, everybody would at least like to have a safe avenue to be able to travel. The other thing about traveling on New Bowers Road, and a lot on Robert Beck Road, are a lot of elderly people that own that property, and they start trying to get out. But, you know, we're all getting older. I drive slower, I don't drive as fast, and those big trucks are gonna want to get to where they want to go.
I don't drive near as good either.
Well, I don't either, I can't see that good. Took my glasses off, I couldn't see you, all right? So, my point is, is we really need to take a look at the whole perspective of all of this. The transportation people need to look at the side roads, they need to take into consideration the fact of, of how we're going to be affected, especially, and I, I hope we do get jobs. I mean, you know, I'm not opposed to jobs, but three thousand cars plus the big trucks? That just doesn't make sense. So, I applaud each of you, if you haven't been, go right on those three roads that I just mentioned. Go take a look at them.
I have, I-
I, I know, but maybe everybody else hadn't. Your, your business, you go everywhere, Mr., I realize that. But just take a look at them and look at the homes. Most of those homes are close to New Bowers Road. You go in there and have to widen that road, you're gonna, they're not gonna have a yard. They will not have a yard.
And it's like I told Ms. Beck earlier today on the phone, we're here, we're listening, we want to look at this thing, and, and we want to try to-
I appreciate it.
Try to figure out how to make it work.
But take all that in consideration, the last thing I'll ask you to do, pray about it.
There you go.
Pray about it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Did the traffic consultant answer his specific question? He really didn't give it him opportunity to-
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that at the end, just take these notes, and like I say, we, believe me, I got my little notes here and got them in the head, and then we can roll on. How are you tonight, ma'am?
Good, thank you, just putting my address in.
And I think it'll, it'll work out, everybody, we'll, we'll get the, we'll save some time here, and everybody- Yes, sir. If you don't mind, bring me one, does anybody else want a water?
My name is Nancy Ale Mular. I live on Rican Drive, which, uh, off Smith Road, which intersects June Bowers Road. The other two speakers have really said most of what I was going to say, so I'm going to, uh, cut mine really short. But, uh, my main concern is the traffic. Even with two, three entrances, all of that traffic will be traveling New Bowers Road. Moving the main entrance closer to New sixty-four may help, but all the traffic won't come from New sixty-four, it will come from the feeder roads, the four feeder roads, uh, which will be a logistical nightmare if you live on the, any of those roads and trying to go to work in the mornings. If you need to make a left-hand turn, it would be impossible. With, they said last time, uh, three thousand seven hundred jobs plus, tonight they said three thousand plus, but that, if everybody went to work between seven and nine in the mornings, that would be thirty cars per minute traveling on that road, plus the school buses and the local traffic that's already using that road.
You're pretty good with your math, I just want to tell you that, okay? That's pretty awesome.
I taught math for a while.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't object to progress. What we do object to is placing the business park in the middle of the residential area on a small country road that is absolutely inadequate to handle the traffic. An entrance onto New sixty-four may not be economically feasible, but it can be done. Whoever owns that land, make them an offer they can't refuse. It can be done. So, air, my final question is, what will it be, Mr. Yates and committee? The needs and the concerns of local citizens who are taxpayers and voters, or the power of big money? Thank you.
Thank you. Right. How are you this afternoon, sir?
How you doing? Um, I'm sorry, my name here real quick, uh, my name is Mark Gathings, and, uh, I'm at the, uh, one point five-two mile marker for your third entrance. I am the property right beside of it. Ms. Smith is on the other side of Mr. Class's property, so we, we're in between each other. I can see her house really well now.
Same side of the road as, uh, this property here?
Yes, sir, on about one and a half acres back, down to the creek, up a little bit, it's in like, you know, triangle pyramid shape, but, um, great questions about Robert Beck and Smith Road, that was my concern, too, because they're gonna filter in that way, they're gonna run all the way down to sixty-four and back out the other entrance with trucks. Um, you gonna come in and take up the road frontage of our property, of our houses. The buffer is what I'm really concerned about. I'm on the side of that. I've been a maintenance manager for over thirty-some years. I worked for companies that we had to set buffers, and we had to set acoustic walls and everything just to keep the noise down, just so the manufacturer still can run. You giving me a hundred yard, or a, a hundred feet, or thirty yards offside my property? And where I live, I have a little down draw at the hall, at the creek, back up, every bit of that sound comes right up. I hear everything. I can hear, I can hear deer moving back there, I just hear it. These little buffers that you set up, that's not gonna be no good for that point, not for that area. You don't live in that area, you don't hear what we hear every day. My window, my bedroom window's right there on my back deck. I mean, I'm gonna hear everything from this side all the way back up to the hillside. Now, I'm, I don't want four hundred, seven hundred houses back there, no. And I'm all right with some business going back there. What I am, what I'm real concerned about is, uh, we don't know what's going back there. And, uh, I know what goes behind buildings, compressors, chiller systems, water towers, anything that's supposed to be in the front of the building goes through the back. I've installed a lot of them, and I know what it sounds like. And, uh, for those that don't live in areas like that, you don't know what it sounds like, but I do. I moved to that community about four years ago, bought the house. And I've always lived in Davidson County all my life, stood on Hallways Church Road about twenty-seven years. Always been out in the rural area, light progress happening, nothing against that. I've worked in Davidson County about all my life. As a matter of fact, I work up here off of exit one oh two right now.
Awesome, awesome.
And, uh, worked for a lumber plastic company up there in Thomasville, uh, exit one oh six, Flint, Hornburg, for twenty years up there, so I've been here.
And you know, we, we heard that for a long time, everybody's gotta drive out of Davidson County to work, and-
To work.
Ain't no good jobs here, and, you know, we-
It was a blessing that, uh, our company, when I left my old job, I had to go to Kernville, work for the company I'm with now, and a year and a half later, they moved down here to CB Product Building. So, I thought, wow, what a blessing, I'm ten minutes up the road, right from my house now, I'm from the job. But the concern is the, uh, I got, we got like Ms. Cheryl Hedrick right in front of me. She's, she's hard enough for her to get out in traffic now. I got Ms. Bonnie right beside her, Ms. Bonnie Hedrick, and getting out, just getting out all the time, traffic. Then we got my neighbors beside me getting older, retiring. We got a lot of older folks in our community, that's gonna be, it's gonna hard, it's gonna be hard for them to deal with what's going on at one time. But, uh, that noise, that buffer, I kinda seen something about the, um, Timberview going down and, uh, putting up some walls or something like that, or some berms and our tree line. It might work on a flat surface, but down that draw and up that hill, that little, that little berm is not gonna do nothing. I'm gonna be probably the, the most complaining neighbor to the committee because of this, because they, they can't follow the perspective of trying to zone that out, you know, just to a point. Now, you're right, it's probably not a good entrance for a third entrance there. It's a lot of creek, it's a lot of draw right there, water runoff, and they may not be able to develop that, and I hope they don't. Uh, I think sixty-four is your best bet going in and out. About every business park I drove into, I drove down one way and came back out. Now, I know some businesses had to have a fire exit, you had to have a second entrance out that way. But trucking, trucking should never allow, we should never see eighteen-wheeler coming down that road. Everything should come off of sixty-four right to that part. That, that, ain't no reason why it couldn't. But, um, that's just my concern because, um, I love where I'm at. I love Davidson County.
I love Davidson County, too, Mark.
No, I'm telling you, and, uh-
You know, better place to live, and they're out here.
My grandchildren, they come out there and play, and now I'm gonna have to watch them in the yard all the time if they're going down the hillside. Hopefully, I can get out in the road, I tried to build them a little playhouse, just play right here in the backyard and stuff. It's a real concern for- for the community. Um, please keep that in mind as we think about that. I, I'm just, I'm a little wary about, you know, we say it's a shells company, we don't know what's going in there. I don't know if we all really understand what the limitations are, what can be put in there, what are we gonna hear, what, what, what's allowed, what's not allowed, things like that, you know, so...
You know, from, from what I'm seeing, Mark, and I'm just saying this, from what I'm seeing, is bigger type shell buildings, whether it could be a furniture manufacturer, it could be, um, any kind of manufacturer. I know with EDC, and y'all have been getting these emails, too, we have different companies that just call and they're looking for a place to expand in Davidson County, and they want a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot building. They only have, only have fifty employees, you know? The next one comes in that may have five hundred employees, so it's all across the board. And Mr. Smith here, uh, Jonathan, he don't know, he don't have a crystal ball to know which, which one of these companies are coming. But what I do see looking here is very good companies that would pay very good wages, and they would be good for our community. Nucor, we went and looked at Nucor, me and Mr. Shores did, they pay really good money. Uh, I don't think they bad on their, um, uh, impact on our environmental, on the land, I don't think they are. I've seen what they got in Florida, looks nice. So, we do, as a board, we really try to, to bring in, and I, I'm hoping Mr. Smith, he's from here, and I don't think he wants to do anything that would negatively impact the county. So, I know he wants to make a dollar, but on the other hand, his family's from here, he's from here, uh, and I hear your concerns about the berms, too, okay? But again, I'm gonna go back to this residential neighborhood, if that goes in there, there's no berms, there's no nothing, and you know the noise that can come out of some neighbors, 'cause I got one that plays music till about-
Right.
I don't know, three o'clock every night, just about, and-
I, I understand that, but, um-
And I want to be good neighbors, too, so I just let them do their thing, and, um, so...
I, I do know what goes behind buildings, you know, and I do know-
I, I do, too, I-
And I know how loud it can be, and I know how the noise can be a real nuisance sometimes, and like I said, we, company I work for, we got, we had to do something about it, we had to put ten-foot acoustic walls up behind our building, on the berm, on the tree line.
You talking about there at, uh, CB Products, you're talking?
I know, I work for Flint Trading, or it's PPG now, when I worked for them, so, but, uh, no, CB Products, we are an automation company, we're real quiet, so we don't, you don't hear us when we in working, so-
Right.
It's just more traffic back and forth, but...
And so, several of these folks, I know Chris, he does, uh, he's done some stuff, and he knows the air compressors, and, and I do, too, I mean, they, high-performance air compressors, so, again, but again, our job is to zone, and hopefully, you know, they'll look at their neighbors and try to, when, when they sell to somebody or build this building, hopefully, hopefully he'll build them and then sell them to somebody or build them and lease them, and then he will have control over maybe where the air compressors go and, and that kind of thing. And then he will have control over maybe where the air compressors go and, and that kinda thing. That would be the ideal situation.
Well, I would ask to please take consideration, especially between Ms. Smith and myself, that I think our buffer should be a little wider, because we're, we're right on the property line.
Okay.
We're on the side.
Well, Mr. Smith and his team's right behind you, so we will talk about that later on. And like I say, hopefully we can all come together and, and, uh, get along and make something work and, and try to, try to resolve this situation. So, we'll see. Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it, okay? Alright, next. We got one coming from right and left here, so. How are you tonight, sir?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Kirkman, I live at eleven oh four New Bowers Road.
I think you used to be a highway patrolman, didn't you?
I'm retired.
Ah, there you go.
He's a radio operator too.
Radio? I think you might have wrote me a ticket one time, I don't know.
I was, I was thinking the same thing. I'm sorry, sir.
Trying to think back, I can't remember that far back, Jeff.
For what it's worth, and I appreciate that. I, uh, I did my best working here, and, and I enjoyed working here. That's why I chose to retire here. Um, we've been there over twenty years. If you look on the map, if you need a, a reference point, if you look at first circle off of New Bowers Road, the southernmost intersection with New Bowers Road, if you come off of first circle and don't stop, you run into my front yard. That's where I'm located. I'm on the east side of New Bowers Road. And part of this track in this property backs up to our property, my wife and I.
Show me that again on the map, please, uh, Lee.
It's, uh, first, first circle where it intersects, the southernmost intersection, it's a-
Right down here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first circle right here.
He's on the east side though, he said, so he's on the same-
Old sixty-four side. If you, if you fail to stop, stop sign, you run into my front yard. That's where I live. My concern is, or it's several things, and I won't belabor the point. I just don't feel like, just for me, I, I, I know some of my neighbors, some of my neighbors I don't know. But I just don't, I feel like we're being, our property values will plummet at their game. That's how I feel about this. Two, if this gets in, and it, and it may, uh, and I, I, Mr. Crook has been very helpful in explaining some things, but what comes along with working forty plus years in law enforcement with me, is I have dealt both with criminal and civil courts, and I'm somewhat familiar with working with attorneys on some things. Doesn't make me an expert, but I'm somewhat familiar with it. And once this in there, if there's a violation, or violations plural, those things are civilly litigate, litigated and can continue for months, sometimes years. And in the meantime, it persists, whatever it is. Those are facts, and just saying, it's not here yet. Last but not least, New Bowers Road, when it was built, was not built for industry. The plan use plan here in our county, I'm proud of that. We, we need a land use plan, and I'm not saying we don't. It needs to be responsibly done, and I'm, I applaud that. I'm not, no argument from me about that. But it needs to be responsibly done. This tract of land doesn't border, doesn't access US sixty-four. That's part of the plan, out there, the economic corridor. The idea is to come off of sixty-four. Sixty-four is built for traffic, built for industrial traffic. New Bowers Road is not. I don't know what else to say about it, except that I just hope, or I, I, but some of you guys I know, Mr. Shell, long since nineteen seventy-five, Mr. Short, I've known for some years. I really don't think you'd want this in your backyard, 'cause that's where it's gonna be in mine. So, that's my main purpose for, for coming here. And a lot of good things have been said here. I just, I wonder, and the presentation, it was a nice presentation that the, the, the company made for us. But what we don't hear is what concerns me. We don't know what kinda business we're gonna get here if it comes in. There's a lot of unknown about that. And I don't know, I've kinda, I would've been proud of my place there. That's my home, I'm not trying to make a dollar on the home, I'm just living there, leave it to my kids. Please vote your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I wanna clarify one thing. Lee, did you ever figure out where his house is at? 'Cause I don't know yet, and I don't know where he lives.
Eleven oh five. Stop sign, that's over.
It's, I, I think it's-
I know New Bowers is pretty good, but I just don't-
Eleven oh five. Mr. Kirkman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the, uh, I'm gonna change back to the zoning map that it may be labeled. Well, I went the wrong way, I'm sorry.
So, you're in between old sixty-four and this property, Mr. Kirkman, is that where?
Backs up to our, woods backs up to our property, just to, uh-
The development backs up to your property?
I think it's right in here, and that's the third entrance, and there's two rightaways right here. I think it's right there.
So, you over there close to Junebug Curry's place, or?
I'm a little bit south of that, on the opposite side of the road.
Mr. Curry's place is right there.
Yeah, yeah, he's on the other side.
The broom factory that-
He's right there.
We're, we're south, where the property borders is south of that.
Yeah, that's where he is.
That's right there then.
Yeah, that's where he is.
That's where we are.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. Yep, I like to know all the details, okay, so that's good.
And I welcome if you would like to come out, and if you don't need my permission, I'll give you permission to come out to my place and walk and look.
I know the broom factory there, and actually I've target practiced, uh, back in the back there and done all that, you know, so, yeah. Alright, thank you, appreciate it. Have a good night, thank you. Alright, ma'am? How are you this evening?
Oh, thank you, how are you?
Not bad. I'm gonna go to the beach and go fishing tonight after, uh, this meeting, so whatever time we get out of here, I'm on the way to Currie Beach, okay?
Sounds fun.
Fish off the pier, so.
Um, my name's Caroline Hedrick, and, uh, my husband and I live on two ninety-seven Robert Beck Road. We are kinda below that bottom border.
Robert Beck comes in right here?
Yes, so our, you're, you're hovering all around our area, but, um, if I had the pointer, I could point right to it. But, uh, we're in that vicinity. And then my mother, um, who Mark Gathings had just mentioned earlier, uh, Ms. Bonnie, one of the elderly ladies in the neighborhood, she lives at, um, ten twenty-three New Bowers Road, which is right there where Queen's Lane is located, kind of diagonal from Mr. Kirkman that was just up. So, right there at that third area that adjoins the property. Um, and I had a prepared thing, but it's chopped apart, so-
That's okay.
Bear with me if I'm kinda choppy on this, because people have covered a lot of my points. Um, but, um, you know, we, my husband and I have chose to remain in Davidson County, and we purchased our family land back in nineteen ninety-four, I think before this land development plan went into place, um, to build our home and raise our family. Um, there is a very small section of land between the back of our property and where the class property joins, only about two hundred and thirty feet, which is not very much. Um, and that's, um, Mr. Beck's property that owns that. I do enjoy living here, um, due to the small town feeling and the peacefulness of our neighborhood. Our county has communities filled with families that have remained here through many generations. Um, we, we value the sacrifices that our ancestors have made to look after future generations and to preserve land for us, so that we can have our homes and families there. Um, it's a place where many of us know each other, a community with slower pace of life, small town hospitality, and traditional values. But all this stuff that's been going on with development, you know, that, that changes a lot of that. Um, you know, the, whenever the notifications are sent out, you know, that was maybe only around sixty-five people that it looks like it affects. But it affects a much greater area than that, because our notifications in the county only go, go to adjoining property owners. We've got all the property on the other side of New Bowers Road that's affected by this. Smith Road, Robert Beck Road, Connor Hill Mine Roads, were all affected by this.
Actually, it affects the whole county.
It affects the whole county, yes, sir, it does. But, but from the traffic and all that, it directly affects us. Um, I did try to go through the land development plan just to see, um, where maybe there were some points wherever, where I could, um, make some notes, um, that, um, some things that, in my opinion, are inconsistent with policies. Maybe I interpret them the wrong way, but per my interpretation, um, with the economic development policies, policy one point five, economic development efforts should encourage the revitalization and reuse of currently unused or underutilized structures, sites, and infrastructure in appropriately located areas. You know, I'll kinda read that to also look at how many vacant buildings and vacant sites do we already have in our county that are zoned for industry that are not being utilized?
We don't have hardly any, ma'am.
We don't? Um, well, I know, well, down towards Belmont Road and area, it looks like there's quite a bit, but maybe I'm reading that wrong.
We have people looking all the time, and we don't have any, any buildings for them to occupy, so.
Or, or even land that's not been developed yet, that's zoned for industry. Um, there was acres rezoned just in Connor Hill Mine Township, just about a mile down the road from us, which has not been developed yet, and that was a recent rezoning this year. Um, then if you look at policy section four, industrial development defines light industry as one that does not introduce additional traffic into residential streets. Well, this is introducing it all through our streets. Um, you know, we've already talked about where the entry points are at, um, you know, with the fact that there's a potential for three thousand seven hundred and seventy jobs, is what I was reading in the application. You know, that's seven, probably at least seven thousand five hundred and forty trips a day, if you're going to and from work and every person is driving, um, or more with the trucks and, um, to deliver any materials or finished goods. Um, and while, you know, we can't control how a person travels, having direct access to the industrial site from Highway sixty-four would certainly help to divert some of the traffic away from our residential roads if it was to be approved. Uh, we need to keep the Highway sixty-four industrial corridor as that, um, keep the traffic on US sixty-four and eighty-five, not our residential neighborhoods. Policy four point two, new industrial development should not be located in areas that would diminish the desire, desirability of existing and planned non-industrial uses, and I'm thinking of non-industrial as residential. Um, so, you know, creating an industrial park in our backyard would certainly diminish the desirability of individuals that want to move into our neighborhood, either in an existing home or on purchased, purchased property to build upon. Um, I'm aware, you know, currently of a young couple that recently purchased property right across from, um, one of the entrances on New Bowers Road, and they've put all their plans on hold because they don't know what's going to happen. And I've heard of some others who have just moved into the area, um, to get away from similar development, and now they're faced with decisions about what to do next. Um, the traffic, you know, in addition to any noise and lighting nuances, are gonna make our residential areas undesirable. Um, and again, I agree that the buffers need to be larger. Um, you know, just to kinda put things in perspective, this room's probably about fifty to sixty feet in length, so that's, that's not a lot of a buffer when you're talking about industry, um, between our homes and where the locations are at. Um, and two, with, you know, buffers, we live nine tenths of a mile away from Connor Hill Mine Road, where Keppley Frank is at. And I know that's, you know, old industry there, but I can hear, you know, from our home, the grinding, the, the backup buzzers on equipment and things like that. And we have trees and houses as buffers all along through there, you know, for a nine tenths of a mile. So, what would it be if we have multiple facilities behind our home? The noise from Interstate eighty-five and sixty-four has increased significantly in our area, because the landowners, um, have had their, um, timber harvested from the property. And in the winter, we can see lights through to the other areas. Policy four point seven, warehousing, storage, and distribution facilities should have convenient access to appropriate thoroughfares and should be visibly buffered according to their location. Access to such facilities should not be through a residential neighborhood. Again, all three accesses are in the residential neighborhood. And, you know, again, I agree, you know, the current unknown of what's going in there is a concern. Um, we went from seeing a plan from Davidson Craven that had six to seven buildings depicted on it, and now we're not really sure what all could go in there. It's kind of a blank slate. But again, if this zoning is approved, it must contain, contain conditions that the developer purchase property, um, in order to directly access Highway sixty-four, regardless of the cost to the developer. Um, as someone else had mentioned, there's multiple tracts for, for sale. Davidson Craven already owns thirty-five acres there at the very end of New Bowers Road, so why not try to buy property to cross over and at least get the other access out to sixty-four instead of coming over to points two and three on down New Bowers at, I think it was one point something and one and a half something miles. Um, that could give a second access if one was required, if they were to cross the, I don't know, if that's Three Hat Mountain property or something to do with Sam Harris's property there, that could join over to, um, Davidson Craven's current lot. I know it might not be cost prohibitive, 'cause there's a big gully there with water. Um, but again, that expense should be on them, not on us in the residence. Um, traffic, excuse me, policy eight point four talks about traffic management and safety in the vicinity of public schools shall be recognized as a priority and supported. I know we've already talked about DOT determines that. But, um, New Bowers Road, Connor Hill Mine Road, all of those roads are heavily used by employees of the school system, by buses, parents, sibling teenage drivers, taking their, um, siblings, you know, just back and forth to school each day between Davis Townsend and Central Davidson Schools, as well as our elderly drivers and neighbors that occupy the roads. Policy section ten addresses agricultural and rural area preservation, preservation. And as the plan states, agriculture land is a finite resource. Once it's converted to other purposes, it is not returnable to the original use without major cost. Um, by looking at the GIS map, close to half of the lower track has been used for agricultural purposes. Um, thirty percent of the class property is being used by farmers for crops, and the remaining of those properties is timber that has been cut in recent years. Um, that thirty-five acre lot acquired by Davidson County, excuse me, Davidson Craven earlier, um, was formerly leased by farmers. It was graded, and it sat vacant for close to two years now. Um, and so, you know, we've, we've messed up that land the way it laid there. Um, and I hope we don't take a build it and they'll come type of model, um, in building this, because, um, if they go in and grade all that down, then that's just destroying our resources there. Again, once this land's converted, it's not returnable to the original use without major cost. And then policy section fourteen deals with water quality and specifically addresses High Rock Lake. The topography of the property leads to an abundance of stormwater runoff from the properties, which goes, um, into Pounder Fort to Abbot's Creek and then on to High Rock. And policy four point three states industrial development should be located on land that is physically suitable and has unique locational advantages, advantages for industry. Um, policy fourteen point two states development that preserves the natural features of the site, including existing topography and significant existing vegetation should be encouraged. Again, the topography of this land does not appear to be physically suitable for building, nor would development preserve the natural features. And, you know, you've been invited to walk the land by neighbors, um, and if you've never been on that land, it's very hilly, it's up and down. Um, I did take and go on the GIS, GIS map and applied the topography and elevation levels just to kinda see, because I know it goes up and down, it's not significant, you know, how much. Um, and I'm not an expert or have a lot of knowledge on topography maps, um, but just looking at those elevation numbers on the Davidson County GIS mapping system, this land changes by fifty to seventy in most areas. I don't know if that's supposed to be feet, or if that's a four foot model, Lee?
It's by feet.
It's by feet, so is it, but I mean, is it exact footage? If it was eight hundred, or is there something that says topography four feet, so do you multiply that by four?
I think they're four foot lines.
Every, every line's four foot different, whether it be four foot higher or four foot lower.
Okay, again, I don't understand all that, but-
Four foot increments, okay.
But there's a lot of variance from one point of the property to another point of the property. Um, and so this land would require an enormous amount of grading to make flat plots for buildings, um, and that would also redirect stormwater runoff. Um, I will say that the county has done a great job attracting new industries such as Egger, Nucor, Simon's, um, to help sustain economic growth in our county. But at what point do we kinda slow some of the pace for rezoning properties, um, for industry? Um, I don't wanna see us look like Forsyth, Guilford, Mecklenburg County along the eighty-five corridor. Um, I like my small hometown. Um, so we urge the commissioners to take the community concerns into consideration. Um, and while we would like for you to vote against the rezoning request of the class and more properties, um, we know that rezoning is most likely inevitable. Um, um, do please put additional conditions in place to include direct access to sixty-four and larger buffers to protect our residences.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for being kind as well. Y'all will keep our manager and his mother, his mother's not doing very well, so he had to leave, so keep, keep them both in y'all's, uh, thoughts, please. Um, but that's why he left, so, alright, anyone else, uh, wanting to speak? Thought if there's too many more, I gotta take a restroom break, but if we only got a couple more, I'm okay.
Nick Faust, and I live at forty-seven oh eight East US Highway sixty-four. Take me a while to write that.
He's out towards the New Dollar General.
Okay.
Yeah.
At Heath Church Road.
Uh, can you get that other map up your head?
Just so you know, I don't think we zoned the, uh, Dollar General, did we?
No, it was already zoned.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Mister, Mister Faust is right out here, I think. Is this your track right here, Mister Faust?
Yeah. So, only about eight, about, about that, and then four- So only about a mile and a half from all that, and the four lane is where you would have to come out to try to get to sixty-four. I believe those people want two and a half million dollars for that thirteen acres, and the one beside of it's eight hundred and fifty thousand, just so you know. And if you need to dispel this myth about traffic, I can sit in my driveway anytime I want to, thirty cars both ways before I can get out. And it's only worse up there with that new traffic pattern. That's a Looney Tune engineer. I'm serious. That did that because that should have been a cloverleaf. That's what they ordinarily have coming off of an interstate to a major highway, is a cloverleaf, not that mist.
Well, you know, we asked DOT about that, and DOT pretty much rules the rules of the roads.
Oh, I know, I'm not fussing at y'all, I'm just dispelling the myth about the traffic that everybody wants to talk about needs to be on sixty-four. It's already a zoo. It's already a zoo.
It has definitely changed in the last ten years, I promise you.
It is awful. The only time you don't have traffic is maybe early Sunday morning. Ain't nobody going to church, you know?
Right.
That's really all I got to say on that.
Thank you, Mr. Faust. All right. Michael, come on up.
It's all right, I'll just add my name beside my wife here.
Beside the bosses, right?
That's right, the boss, and she's my heart. First of all, I'd like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for saving me and for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. And I'd like to thank each and every person that showed up tonight to support our cause. I'm not gonna, I had a lot of things written down as others did, but a lot of it's been covered, but I just wanted to stress a few points. New Bowers Road cannot handle the volume of the increased traffic. Employee traffic, transfer trucks, just increased day-to-day traffic, and that's common sense is gonna say that ultimately the road would have to be rewiden. With that, you're gonna have, as we've mentioned before, property owners are gonna lose road frontage. It's, you know, and we can point fingers and say, well, that's DOT's decision, this, that, and the third, but it's gonna happen. It's inevitable.
And I'm not pointing any fingers, that's just who makes the rules, you know that, right?
Well, this is conversations I've had with others, not just you, Mr. Yates, and I appreciate your time this afternoon. The county leaders, we have to keep the citizens and the safety of citizens in mind. This is rural area, it's a hilly, curvy road, still used by farmers on a daily basis, school buses on a daily basis. Trying to get through here without talking over myself. The proposed buffers of fifty to a hundred feet are inadequate, and they're not commensurate with the size of the buildings proposed in the original plan. The current plan doesn't show any buildings, but then that's the big question that we all have is, you know, what is going there? And that's why it's utmost importance to you guys because the conditions that you do set, if you approve the zoning, they're gonna have lasting effects. As you said, the zoning goes with the property, so, you know, we as citizens just need to have those conditions to protect ourselves. Development of any kind, houses, commercial, whatever, you know, we're losing farmland and forestry every day. Let's see what I've missed here. Our group, you know, citizens, when this all sort of coming about, you know, we hear different things from time to time, but we've been behind the eight ball. You know, preparations were made for sewage, preparations were made for the road reconfiguration out there, which is a personal pet peeve of mine because Davidson School's been there thirty-plus years, and no improvements were ever made to the road for that, for the thousands of parents, teachers, and kids that have traveled to Davidson School. Here we come, the early planning stages of this, all of a sudden we get a road reconfiguration to most likely done to accommodate long trucks trying to cross four lanes of traffic. That's just common sense. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but anybody with any reason can see what's happening here.
But it was not done for the, I was in the meeting, just so you know, it was not done for that, it was done for the accidents that was happening coming off of eighty-five. So the state, they told me how many wrecks was there a day, I couldn't believe it, or a week. It was a lot, so that's actually what, that's why they done this new work on sixty-four. So we sat right back here, me and the manager and Commissioner McClure, and I don't remember if there's anybody else, and we talked to them for about two hours, and we didn't like the way they had it drawn out, but they assured us that was the safest way to do that intersection, so they have statistics to prove it supposedly, so.
Well, as it's been stated by Davidson Craven and by the board and the planning, long-term plan, whatever, you know, this is part of a long-term project. Your decisions are gonna have a long-term impact, you know, but we being the neighbors, you know, we want the developers to be considerate of what's being done here. This is a long-term project. Be a good corporate neighbor. There's ample commercial property up and down U sixty-four that could be used to access this, as been pointed out earlier. Looking at the map as it is, this is maybe a question for the developer, but, you know, there is a connection here between their existing property at the end of New Bowers Road and Why can some connection not be made there for the proposed property for the zoning to make one entrance and then potentially use the Gaynell Davis property as a second entrance? But I still contend, I believe any new development here in this, what's been presented, should come directly off sixty-four. Nucor has direct access off of sixty-four. The mega site project on Connor Hill Mine Road has direct access to sixty-four, and I think this should too. I thank you for your time, but the decisions you make are gonna impact a lot of lives, and as you can see here, families are important to us, our homes are important, and we just, we do all need to be good neighbors.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hey, my name is Glenn Gunter. I live at one-two-two-five New Bowers Road.
Is this where that's at?
Uh, yes, sir, I'll do my best.
Or get me close, that's all I care.
Our property borders the creek. Probably right here somewhere. Uh, yeah.
So you're right beside the broom factory as well?
We're right across the street, yeah.
Across the street, okay. Y'all know where the broom factory's at now?
I never knew it was a broom manufacturer, actually, so, so we lived there for twenty-eight years, over twenty-eight years now, and it's a great area. Our boys have grown up there, we have a sixteen and nineteen-year-old sons, and, you know, to think about them being any younger and this industry coming in scares me. I did, Mr. Kurtman spoke, and I think he did give me a ticket too, so, you know.
Like he got all of us.
I don't feel like it.
He was a good one.
Not saying I wasn't guilty, but I didn't like getting a ticket, right? I'm a pastor, a pastor of Holloway Baptist Church, but I also work bivocational, and I run a large warehouse here in Davidson County, so I know how the large trucks and warehousing works, and so I've done that for twenty-seven years now. And so I just, I understand the impact that large trucks have and just how that all works, and they take the path wherever they want to go, whether you try to push them to go this way or that way, so I understand, and so, you know, it makes me think about, and I just want to say, I appreciate you guys, the comments and just your willingness to listen to us, because I didn't feel like we got that in the last meeting that we had, and so, and I agree, I think we need growth, there's no doubt. I mean, my kids are growing up, they're gonna need jobs, and I know other people, their children and all the people moving in our area, they need somewhere to work, so I'm not saying I'm against growth, but I do feel like we do have to have some provisions to protect our residential neighborhoods. I walk every morning up our road, so from my house to the old sixty-four end is two-point-three miles total, and so I walk it between six-thirty and seven-thirty every morning, and so I know most of my neighbors probably seen me and my white German shorthaired pointer dog Luna, I call her lunatic, she tries to chase some of your cats and goes and sniffs the cows and all that fun stuff, but, you know, as I hear these gentlemen behind me talk about, you know, potential three thousand, you know, that's maybe three thousand cars, as you said earlier, and I know that half of those people are probably gonna come up New Bowers Road, mainly because of what's happened down at New sixty-four and how that's been arranged, and maybe the same DOT person that did that is the one that did the traffic study, I hope not, but, um, that really scares me if that same person did that, because I don't know if he knows what he's talking about on the other end, but.
I want y'all to send a copy of this meeting to Pat Ivey and.
To the district engineer.
District engineer.
Yeah, we need the DOT guy in here, but, you know, I, again, I know we need growth, but I would really love to see some provisions. You know, that second and third entrance that they're talking about, that's gonna be huge in our residential neighborhood, and I know how much room trucks take up, so there's no doubt they'll have to widen that road, I mean, there's no doubt at all. You know, for me, my wishes, and I know everybody has their own wishes, I'd love to see those, that second and third entrance at least made only as an emergency entrance and exit, because, you know, I understand you do need emergency entrances and exits for stuff like that, and definitely the larger buffers all the way around. I understand the gentleman talking about the sound, as I walk up there that early in the morning, I can hear the sound from the highway, and it's amazing the difference when you go down in the valley and back up and just how loud the sound gets, so, again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of you, and good to see you, Steve and Mr. Elliott.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or night, whatever it is, midnight or.
Good evening, everybody. I wanna go ahead and make my jump in, I've stood in line for a while, but Mark Sink one-eight-eight Dollar Place, if you look on the map.
One-eight-eight Dollar Place.
You live down by the Michael and Lori Beck, yeah?
I do, on the land that's been in our family for many generations, my mother's sitting in the bathroom, if I turn around, I'll get upset, so if you. I live on, we live on land that's been in our family for generations, so this is gonna be our neighbor, and I have met with Mr. Smith, and I appreciate his time. I met with Mr. Smith and expressed my concerns to him, but I'm also here, I have a little bit of life experience dealing with traffic, traffic crashes, neighbor disputes, noise problems. Spent about thirty years dedicating my life to public service. Maybe if I'd have chosen a different career, I could have afforded to purchase some of this land, but so into trying to help others and not necessarily into my pocketbook. So, I do want to say, I was happy to hear y'all's concern about the entrances. Any entrance between the Davis property and old sixty-four is gonna be a problem. That road is too narrow, it can't handle it. My grandfather was a logger, nothing against the logging trucks, but we already deal with those. When they're a little bit too tall, they use Robert Beck, they come through, rip all our cable lines down, we have to fight with Spectrum for a week to get lines put back up already, we have to pull off the shoulders of the road to let them come behind the curves, and we know they're gonna take the path of least resistance to get to where they need to go. I myself, I fight the gauntlet on sixty-four multiple times a day, traveling to the community college to work, and it is a gauntlet. It's very, very badly designed, there may not have been much options there, but no offense, I know you didn't do that one.
Got blamed for it, though, maybe a little bit.
But it's not gonna be better, but I do think we need to really work on the centers. The berms, the setbacks, you know, a hundred-foot setback is great, I know that's more than a minimum, but it's, you know, anything we can get to protect, you know, all the neighbors. According to Onyx, I'm six-tenths of a mile from Keppley Frank, and I hear every loader when they put it in reverse. So I know what I'm gonna hear when it's just, you know, a few hundred yards across the field. So that, those are my points, noise pollution, light pollution, things I gotta address with Mr. Smith in person. But those entrances, it's dangerous, and I ask that, I ask that you continue to pursue pushing it towards sixty-four as much as you can. You've asked the question, I don't want to see a big housing development in there, I don't think our schools can stand it right now. My wife's a nineteen-year employee here at Davidson County School System.
Awesome, yeah.
I know what she deals with, and I know what their funding situations are and everything that challenges with that, and I, we don't need to get ahead of that anymore till we get caught up a little bit. The other thing I wanted to address, and I've learned this going through all the planning and zoning meetings, is that somewhere ten to twenty years ago, there was a plan done that identified our area, our homes, our farms, and I heard the term used tonight of unused land. There is no such thing as unused land. The land we're talking about here has been used by farmers who are my neighbors, who I bought my beef from for twenty years, to raise the crops that fed the beef that fed my family. Just because there's not a house or a building on it does not mean it's unused. I had a text today from one of these property vultures asking about my vacant land. It's not vacant, it's put there by God. God designed it, God developed it for its best use, its best purpose. It's for the wildlife, I'm an outdoorsman. You know, we've gotta have trees in our future. My grandfather was a logger, but he understood, you can't, you can't take them off. And I ask y'all as the protectors of our county to keep that in mind as we move forward. If that plan is ten to twenty years old, it's time to very publicly revisit it. That should not have been a surprise to all of us, and that's time to revisit that, readdress it, and let everybody who owns a house or property in this county know what the county's long-term plans are for our neighborhood. Mr. Yates, good point, children need jobs. My son graduated college last May, he's working here in the county. I want him to live in this county. I wanted him to live on his grandparents' land, but also if it's not gonna be a good area to live in and raise his children, he may choose another county. So just please keep that in mind. And Glenn and his dog do walk every morning, 'cause I dodge them. We wave, but we want to maintain that, I understand development's coming, that those entrances are gonna be an issue.
And I'm gonna piggyback on what you said a little bit, and I don't mean to keep going back to this residential thing, but again, we hadn't discussed there either, there's eight to twelve-hundred cars a day if there's a residential neighborhood.
As I said, I do not want that.
Right.
But thank you for your time, I don't want to get in the way of your fishing, but keep, keep us in mind.
And I hope they bite when I get there, you know?
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Everybody's been so cordial tonight, and it's a very good meeting we're having here. All right, is there anyone else? Come on up, ma'am.
You might need that restroom.
Yeah, 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 we're probably gonna have to take a break after this one for about five minutes.
I'll just put my name out here beside of Nick, I'm Linda Faust, I live at forty-seven oh eight East US Highway sixty-four, Lexington. Everyone wants the traffic to come off of sixty-four, which could be a good plan. However, you have to realize right there when New Bowers Road comes out, within five-hundred feet or so, you go down to two lanes. You do not have four lanes there. We live on U sixty-four, we know what you're facing, and we're on the two-lane part. So I ask these gentlemen, if they are successful in getting an entrance coming off of U sixty-four, that they take their planning very carefully because it's very dangerous right there. The state has told us now for the third time that they are gonna start the widening. They've used the money the other two times in the late nineties and another, maybe early two thousands, monies for other things. We've gotten letters in the mail, so we know they've taken aerial view of our property to know how to move the dirt. But again, this area is so tight, so congested, that the whole area where they messed up, this intersection, needs to be looked at very carefully if it comes off of New Sixty-four.
That's a good point. Thank you, Ms. Faust. Jason, if you will, tomorrow, get with Mr. Ivey. I would like to know when Sixty-four, they plan to widen it at least to Ashboro or something.
Coming from Ashboro to one oh nine is the last I heard, on this side of one oh nine, they had any made any plans.
I'm not so sure it'll happen in my lifetime, but anyhow. Awesome, awesome.
Well, you know, Wahlburg, is Wahlburg has been notified of that for, what, thirty years? And they ain't moved yet.
My concern is the rebuilding of western North Carolina. We're gonna have a lot of...
We're gonna take a five-minute break, thank y'all, and we'll be right back.
Okay.
All right, we're getting ready to get started again. Getting ready to get started again.
Sorry, I own coon dogs.
Yeah, that's a little loud whistle there, man. Playing too much ball here lately. Okay, all right, let's try to get back on track. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. We've heard from everybody and thank you very much for being cordial and polite to each other. It's the way we're supposed to conduct a, uh, meeting here and such. I know it's important to everybody and it's a passionate subject or passionate, um, everybody has their own idea. So, do we wanna move forward now with the, uh, traffic study? Is that where we wanna go now and answer, or how do you wanna do this, David?
Yes, Commissioner Gates, we'd like to invite Cliff to come up and speak to some of the questions that were raised about, uh, traffic and entrances and also to share more information about the traffic study that was done, answer a few questions that one or two of the speakers had about what roads were, uh, reviewed and where the counts were done. So that would be helpful, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you, David. What's your name, I'm sorry?
Uh, it's Cliff Lawson.
Cliff, yeah.
I am a senior traffic engineer with the Timmins Group. So I'll just, uh, you know, give my, you know, general spiel and then kinda get into a few specifics. Prior to beginning the traffic study, uh, all of the study parameters have to be, uh, reviewed and approved by the NCDOT in a scoping meeting. Uh, so we have, um, as a traffic engineer, we have no say as far as what the study area will ultimately be, um, in terms of, you know, I heard a gentleman mention about, you know, traffic, how we calculate trips. Uh, the DOT has, uh, specific guidelines, um, on how to calculate trips based on, um, manufacturing land uses, which we had to abide by using, um, the IT Trip Generation Manual, which is a, uh, national manual used for calculating trips for various developments across the country. As mentioned, the traffic study was reviewed and approved by NCDOT. Um, to reiterate some of the things that my colleagues, uh, pointed out, all counts were conducted while school was in session. Um, the development from the, um, study, the development is required to complete multiple improvements, including turn lanes at the driveways as well as, uh, multiple sig- signals along New US 64, which will actually complement the, uh, the NCDOT project that, um, everyone loves around here.
So it is gonna be new signals put out there, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, um, yes, as part of our project. So we have, um, multiple, uh, this development is being constructed over multiple phases and we're introdu- uh, reducing signalization as well as turn lanes as well. And, um, I guess one thing I did wanna say about the NCDOT's project, um, for safety, the RCI is definitely, uh, a safety improvement. Um, they've done studies, you know, across the country and saw the safety benefits from it. So, you know, I know everyone is kind of, you know, giving it a little bit of a hard time, but I do want to, you know, reiterate, that is a, a very good safety improvement.
I wanted to say that a while ago too, but I was afraid they'd beat me up if I did.
Yeah.
I feel a lot safer with our trucks now trying to get off of 85 and get back to my shop. We used to have to try to cross three lanes of traffic basically to get back and go left. So, to us, to me, I think it's safer now. I was a little concerned, and I'm still a little concerned, about the traffic coming from Ashborough or the traffic coming from Lexington where it goes into the two lanes while we trying to make our turns. Again, DOT has assured me that they're looking at that and maybe in y'all's plan that y'all had to put some signals up there, but they said they was looking at it as their next phase. If they see an issue, they are putting up signals, so.
Gotcha.
Again, for, for my company and, and my travel, and, and to me, I think it's a lot safer for the, the folks coming off of New Bowers trying to get to the school. They used to try to dart across the road right there all the time.
And essentially what you're doing with this type of configuration is you're reducing the number of conflict points. So now you only have to focus on fewer, you know, veh- oncoming vehicles as opposed to a standard intersection where you, you can have upwards of thirty-two conflict, conflict points. So, um, just kinda wanted to, to point that out. Um, gentleman asked, what did our study look at? So I just kinda wanted to run through some of the study area intersections. Um, along US 64, we looked at pretty much everything from Bowers Road, um, to Heathchurch Road to the future, uh, well, to the U-turn point from, for the new project. Our study area did go down to the Robert Beck Road, Smith Road intersection, as well as the Raleigh Road, um, I-85 ramps, um, to the west. So, uh, you know, DOT required us to have a pretty extensive study area, um, and as I mentioned before, we're required to do extensive improvements to address those.
So when you say that, um-
Yes, sir.
You necessarily didn't go down Robert Beck Road or Smith Road, but you had a counter outside of that to measure what was coming off of those roads?
Yes, sir. So, it's standard practice, we, I prefer not to perform in-house counts. I hire a third-party, uh, person that does counts all across the state, um, in his case, multiple states. Um, and he will go out there and he would either have an in-person count, but now most of the days they'll just put up cameras at the, the different study area intersections, count the data, get a good baseline into, and submit to us for, for our review.
Ten-four.
So how many cars go up and down 64 now? Do you have that number right there, close?
Um, I do not have that number readily available.
Several years back, it was like fifteen thousand. I remember looking at State website. State comes out every so often and lays those strips across the road.
Yeah, typically it's, um, bi- uh, every two years.
Two years?
Yes, sir.
According to the NCDOT, uh, maps.orgis.com, it's thirteen to fourteen thousand a day currently, and it's gone down a little bit.
So I, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you'll have, that you all have.
So y'all have any questions?
Um, I guess one thing I did want to, um, to point out was, the study looked at two access points on New Bowers Road. Um, any deviation from that would require DOT approval. That's not something that we can, you know, say. Um, however, based off the traffic, I w- I would be surprised if more than one access, if only one access point was ultimately allowed. Um, typically, as a lot of people have mentioned here, you know, once you reach a certain number of vehicles, you do have emergency access, um, that you have to kinda maintain, um, as well. Also, uh, having multiple access points allows for a relief valve just in case you start to see queuing issues and things like that that could, you know, spill back. So, um, just based off the traffic, I don't think, uh, one access point would be feasible for, at least for the, the traffic that they made us, that we had to analyze based off the, the building program.
So, so a question.
Yes, sir.
By y'all, by your, by Davidson Craven numbers, y'all think that there'd be around three thousand employees in that area is the number y'all used. Um, did you, in your traffic study or impact study, did you look at how that will currently affect, uh, New Bowers Road along with any, uh, commercial trucking that, that may go through there? And while you're answering that, you just said, the DOT study said two access points?
Yes, the, the traffic study we did-
Not three?
Right. Um, so-
So which two was those, can you tell us?
I would say, well, for, for traffic study purposes, it's kinda conceptual where, where they are, but the ones, the northernmost one and I would say the, the middle one. But it's, they're conceptual for traffic study.
No matter where you put them.
Right, you know, unless you're, you're talking about having them off opposite of a particular roadway or something, then that's exact, but, you know, so. Um, I guess to answer your question, getting, so the DOT has specific guidelines on how to calculate trips. So for, for this land use code, which is industrial center, it is not based off employees, it is based off of, um, square footage. And from what I've seen, there, the DOT looks at the most conservative method most times when it comes to trip generation, so that is actually, um, a, a more conservative estimation than employees, um, from what I've seen. So to answer your question, yes, we looked at a future condition with all of those, all of the vehicles on the road and we had to, eh, we had to recommend improvements based off of that.
What, what improvements did you recommend?
So, at the side accesses, we are recommending, um, turn lanes as well as, um, uh, dual egress lanes, as mentioned earlier, on US 64. I counted, uh, well, ultimately required, I won't say recommend, it's ultimately required from the TIA. Uh, we're looking at around five signals along US 64, um, the U-turn point, um-
Can you kinda explain this on the map, kinda where this is?
Sure, so-
Do you have a pointer, or? I mean, I think, you know, everybody in the room would kinda like to see and hear what this is and-
Okay.
Let, let's start with what I'm gonna call the main entrance area.
All right, so here, you're looking at north end, south bound, uh, northbound right turn lane into the site, a southbound left turn lane into the site, as well as dual egress lanes out. So you're looking at a left and a right out, separate lanes. Uh, similar configuration on the southern driveway, left in, uh, right in, as well as dual egress lanes out. Um, going down to the US 64-85 interchange, it's kinda off the screen here, but at the southbound ramps, you're looking at signalization here. At the north, let's see. At the northbound ramps here, you're looking at signalization there. At the New Bowers Road, you're looking at signalization here, and then at the U-turn point, you're looking at signalization here. Now, I will say, with this improvement, because you have closely spaced signals, obviously you wanna, timing optimization would have to be performed as well to ensure just optimal trap, you know, tra- travel through, through the network, 'cause this is really a system, you know, it's a really an interchange system when you think about it, you know? So you have to make sure that all of these signals are timed specifically to ensure like no spillback on the ramps or anything like that.
Spillback was the word I was looking for.
Uh-
Yes, sir.
The studies that you do, is that not based on the information that you receive from the person who's gonna put in the, the industrial park?
Um-
'Cause you don't have any idea what the future holds unless till they tell you, is that correct?
Right, but we, so we base it off of square footage. The developer will tell us what they want to do. At that point, we have a meeting with the DOT, tell them what we're planning, what the square footages are, and based off of that, they'll, will determine in the meeting what land use code is appropriate to use. So, for instance, there are multiple, uh, manufacturing land use codes, so like someone could use warehousing, but that is a very light trip generator. So you can have, show little trips with, um, with like warehousing, but based off of the district's experience and things like that, we come up with a trip gen that everyone feels is reasonable, or a land use code that everyone feels is reasonable.
So, the, but, I think my point, if I'm, forgive me if I don't make it proper, is that the two entrance ramps that y'all done at the study on?
The, the two entrance ramps that you done the study on were, were based on information that you received from the, the, uh, developer, right? You didn't do it one on 64, did you?
No, 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 we don't, um-
Because that wasn't given to you, am I correct on that?
Right, we don't, um, from an access point perspective, we, we don't, um, I guess make recommendations for access points unless we feel that an access point, from a traffic perspective, can't work. So we don't tell, you know, a developer like, hey, we, you think we should, you should build something off 64. Now, that being said, I did want to touch slightly on US 64. I think people mentioned the new core. There's a, there's a key difference, like, I think between new core and this development is its proximity to the I-85 interchange. And as I mentioned before, this is more of a system and the, the RCI, the Reduced Conflict Intersection System that the DOT put in, you want to minimize the number of side streets because it could actually negatively impact operations at the interchange as well. So, that's a, a, a huge difference between new core and here is that proximity, that that driveway could potentially be to the interchange.
But you're still dealing with side street, because Bowers Road would be considered a side street. And so if you do the, the turn off of 64, and with a turn lane that you were, as you were talking about, y'all had looked at, but turn lanes in, then the impact would not be that much different.
I would, in my experience, and again, and I won't say, you know, anything definitively without like, you know, looking at numbers, so I just wanna be clear about that. You would still have, with the access off of New Bowers Road, you would still have significant traffic using, utilizing that, as well as having significant traffic utilizing US sixty, the US 64. And the, the point that I guess I'm making is, you wanna minimize the number of side street accesses that you have between an R, along an RCI system. And so essentially, you still will be adding an additional access. And so, we, again, as similar as I said before, as far as, um, driveways and things like that, we can't at this point make a, a determination to say like what NCDOT will or will not allow.
But if you look at the map, if the developer had said, we're gonna allow access off of Bowers Road to first, first entrance there, the second entrance off of 64 will be trucks only. That's where the trucks would go in and come down through there. So, uh, I mean, it looks like to me that all the options have not been looked at in order to, be honest with you, get along with the neighbors.
Well, I, I guess I, I-
I mean, that's not your call, I understand that. I, I'm just, I'm just thinking it out loud, I, I guess.
Kinda one thing you were saying, and I know how the DOT is, 'cause I work with them quite a bit, the DOT may not even give them, uh, a commercial entrance off of 64 there because where the location is to New Bowers and the new infrastructure that they put in, they don't want trucks coming in and having no way to turn around and get back to 85.
Well, I, I look at, at, uh, Edgar out there, we got plenty around. Those trucks do what they want to out there, and this is, that's, is that smaller than this?
Uh, no, it's bigger than that.
Is it bigger than this?
Yeah.
But it still looks like to me there'd be enough room there to do this, I mean, that's just speculation.
Well, but what Edgar's got is around about, so.
Yeah.
And it's out in the middle of the farmland, I mean, they was-
Yeah, but once they turn into the park, they got areas, and Edgar's got a, a designated area for trucks to go down into. And, I mean, I'm not saying that would even work, but I'm saying that there's, uh, to me, there's options there that need to be looked at.
But again, like I say, I can do this, 'cause I own some property there on 64 too. DOT don't just give you a right of way in 'cause you want one, you know what I mean? It's gotta meet a lot of criteria, and it gets really, uh, hard there to interstate, the controlled access they got there. I'm sorry, sir, public hearing's already closed and hopefully we'll- Yes, sir? I'll let, yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, my question would be, on a residential road comparable to Bowers Road, when it's the primary entrance to a business point, with no square footage that the developer anticipates any better, what would be, what, is it two lanes of residential country roads, sufficient for that? Or you say, well, we're widening, or widening to me makes multiple lanes. It could be widening to existing road, why are you gonna, why four lanes, three lanes, four lanes? Because based on my understanding, what the primary entrance is gonna be in this development, uh, there's not enough room there without, I mean, I see three lanes, possibly four if it's the primary entrance, instead of in rest egress. And, and one other question, thank you for letting me ask this. Is it possible to get DOT to look at that before this board makes their decision rather than after they're gonna grant this rezoning of the rest? To me, that would seem logical, but what can be done for that, that after, you know, you would grant rezoning and they say, well, you know, we're just gonna have to clean the ditches out to make those turns on the Bowers Road?
The DOT's pretty much told them what they gotta do here, I mean, they've already told them. He, he just explained that.
Well, we'll be-
Sir, can I get your name, please?
Thank you. What's, what's your-
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dan Smith, uh, I represent another David Smith at A-88 U-Bowers Road, which apparently is gonna be the primary entrance to this development.
Did you get all that, Ms. Harris? You know the location of that, uh-
What, what's your, uh, you said it was your mother's property? What, what's her address?
Twenty-eight A.
All right, what's the address?
Address, sir.
The address. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's down close to the third entrance.
It is.
Third entrance.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna talk about the third entrance, entrance later, but, or the second one or whatever, but, um, yeah, he kinda explained a while ago about the turning lanes up at the, the main entrance, what I'm gonna call the main entrance, up at the very, closest to 64, but-
Just to clarify, uh, I guess what I'm, I'm sorry-
Excuse me, and it might be, y'all might wanna switch sides here, 'cause you can probably see the screen, if we go to the screen, you might can see it better, those empty chairs on the other side, so. Might help a little bit, sorry about that, Cliff, we just gotta jump around a little bit.
No problem. Um, and just to clarify, uh, widening at, along New Bowers Road, uh, as required by the DOT will be, will consist of the, um, constructions, uh, construction of turn lanes at the intersection. So, again, here at this, uh, primary access, you're looking at a northbound right turn lane, right turn lane into the site, as well as a southbound left turn lane into the site, as well as two egress lanes.
When you say the left-hand turn lanes, that mean they'll widen the road there at New Bowers?
Yes, yes, sir.
So the main traffic will go down the right-hand side of the road-
Yes, sir.
There'll be a turn lane in the middle.
Yes, sir.
'Cause again, these folks here, they don't, they, they don't understand, I don't think, exactly what we're talking about, and I'd like for them to know. So we're gonna have a turning lane coming in from coming up New Bowers, from old 64, there'll be a turn lane on the right-hand side, so.
Right, so, just looking at the, looking at the, oh, hello?
Are you there?
Okay, I'm good now. All right, so driving, if I'm heading north onto New Bowers in a single lane, when I get to this, the main intersection, I'll have the option to either continue straight in a through lane or turn right via a separate right turn lane. As I'm driving south along New Bowers, I would have the option to either continue straight in a through lane or turn left in a separate, uh, left turn lane. And it will be a similar situation here, it'll be single lane approaches, um, you know, if you wanted to go straight with dedicated turn lanes into the site.
How far down was that, Lee? The second entrance?
The, that gentleman that spoke.
The, the second entrance, how far down sixty, uh, Bowers Road was that from 64?
It's one point oh seven miles, right at a, a little over a mile.
Look here, we can, we can get to the chase, we might as well get to the chase and, uh, go from there. Um, all right, uh, Jonathan, I guess what we need to talk about is these entrances, okay? So, if we can get that out the way, we can get the monkey off the back and either roll or not roll. We need to talk about the entrance, then we'll talk about some buffer zones or whatever. Cliff, you done a great job, we might need you again here in a minute, but I think we need to get these entrances out the way first-
Thank you.
And then we can figure, figure where we can go from there, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so whoever wants to take this, Jonathan, I don't really care, so, this is- And, and I'll go ahead and tell you where I'm at, Jonathan, if, if that's okay, and I don't know about the colleagues here.
Yes, please.
I'm okay with the first entrance up there off of 64, yeah? Now, these farther on down the road, I got a problem with, so.
Sure, I understand.
And again, if the deal don't work, I get it, the deal don't work, and these folks can have, um, they can have houses in their backyard, so that's probably what they gonna get. But I will go along, me personally, with the first entrance there if we can make that work.
I, I understand, and, um, Brian, um, Cuthfield from Timmins will, can elaborate a little bit, but I think generally speaking, this is Jonathan, not the engineers, the first and the second are necessary. The third, we could, we can take away, you know, we need to be able to access the road frontage, but crossing the stream, accessing the rest of the property from the third entrance, I do not believe we need, it's certainly not required based on Cliff's traffic assessment.
You know, I'm not so sure, I'll just be honest with you, that you got a board here that's gonna go away with anything but one of those entrances, you know? So again, I'm trying to cut it to the chase, and if these folks, they done made it clear that they don't want-
I understand.
-the other two entrances, and again, they can get them for residential, um, and that may be what they'd rather have.
One point, if I may, because it's in line with what you're talking about, you know, a year ago, you all had granted the sewer allocation and we entered into that sewer allocation. You entered into a sewer allocation agreement with Davidson Craven for a hundred thousand gallons of wastewater per day to serve the anticipated square footage. And so the, the struggle or the problem with eliminating the second entrance is, based on what the traffic study reveals, based on what, uh, permitting would be necessary to actually fulfill and build out the square footage that would even be able to utilize that sewer capacity, would require at least two entrances. So, to have just one really would not even allow probably the allocation, you know, to be utilized that you had-
That's not really the case, David, because one building could take care of that allocation, you know, so-
Potential, yeah.
We deal with sewer quite a bit, and that could happen.
Well, I did, did wanna make that point, just 'cause that was kind of a piece of, of our plan as well.
But, but here's another thought, okay?
What a blank check.
He- here's another thought, and I'm one of these guys, that sometimes you gotta take two or three bites at the apple. And I'm talking to you, Jonathan, if, uh, if you're listening. Take two or three bites at the apple, okay? So, these folks here, once you got started and once you got something in here, and let's just say it's seven or eight years down the road, they might see what they can't see now. And they may be good with another entrance coming in later, you know? So maybe you could come to us at that time and they'd go, you know, this ain't as bad as what we thought it was. My grandkids are working there, my, my oldest son's working there, and, you know, this has been good for the community, and, uh, I know it's a big investment for you to go, well, I don't really wanna wait that long, you know? But again, sometimes you gotta take two or three bites at the apple to make it work.
And, excuse me, I understand that. And it's, and, and our responses are not our, we're not answering as to what our preferences would be, we're, we're trying to answer on what is, is, uh, viable from an engineering and an economic standpoint. So, if, if, I could, if we were able to get away with a single entrance, that would be wonderful. I can tell you, one hundred percent of our customers are gonna wanna use the first one anyway, because it's closest to 64. And even if we had rules telling everyone to use the second, they, they're gonna use the first. So I think from a practical standpoint, that is where the, the vast majority of the, um, usage will be. I do not think that we're able to, without an engineering study, even with an engineering study, I think it's premature for us to offer to eliminate the second entrance, but we will, can certainly do everything in our development plan and engineering going forward to emphasize the first entrance.
Um, again, I'll take a consensus of the board. I'm not so sure they'll vote tonight to do anything with this until they have that information, so I don't know how long you wanna push that down the road or how much studying you wanna do. Like I say, I think right now, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong, it's dead if it goes over this one.
I'm, I'm not for it.
Is it dead?
It's dead.
Okay, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to put these two people together, these, you and the folks in the audience, you know? And, uh-
Are we even able to, if we wanted to make that concession tonight, are we able to without a traffic review?
Uh, we don't have the authority to make that concession tonight. Uh, that is purely a DOT's call, as they own the road and would be given any encroachment permits or driveway permit. So, um, again, you know, from a traffic standpoint, I don't think one access would be viable, but in either case, that's not something that we can agree to tonight.
Right, so if DOT would tell you they was good with one, you would be good with one?
We, we would, we would absolutely review that proposal carefully to make sure that our- We, we would, we would absolutely review that proposal carefully to make sure that our, um, that we felt from a marketability standpoint, that was sufficient. But, but we are taking our direction from DOT.
Um, have you, have you bothered to look at sixty-four entrance?
Yeah, I'll take that one. So I'm Brian Crutchfield with Timmons Group, I'm one of Cliff's colleagues, but I'm more from a site planning, site, uh, layout perspective. Um, we have contemplated access to sixty-four there, um, as you know, there's a creek there. And one of the things we'll have to do in order to cross that creek is we gotta get a permit from the US Army Corps of Engineers and from DEQ. One of the key elements they're gonna require of us in order to grant that permit is what they call avoidance and minimization. They're gonna say, why do you need to cross the creek? Why can't you access off of New Bowers Road? And if we can show them that it's a feasible project without crossing the creek, then they will not give us a permit to cross that creek, um, in that, in that fashion. Uh, plus, what Cliff had mentioned before about the RCI project, we think it's highly unlikely that DOT's gonna give us a full access permit there from sixty-four, um, as well. So that's from a site planning, less traffic perspective of why we don't think, uh, coming from sixty-four is gonna be feasible for this development.
And I, I know this ain't gonna be popular with the audience, but I've been in roadwork all my life. I'm not so sure sixty-four is the best place for the entrance, okay? Not, not in that intersection, it's, it's gonna be pretty dangerous and, uh-
Well, I'm not saying lock it down, but nobody's bothered to study it. I'm not saying lock it down, it may not work.
But I'm just saying, I, I don't-
But somebody needs to look at it.
I, I don't think, again, and DOT will tell us, but I, I'm not so sure that- But I'm talking about just me as a road builder and what I've been around all my life.
Tell a lot more about it than I do a little bit.
It's, it's probably not the best location for, for an entrance, and I'm not taking up for these guys at all. I mean, um, I'm just saying, and, and if they wanna study it, that's fine. Sir, we, we're gonna move on and-
Would Bowers Road be any better?
Again, yes, it would, in my opinion, it would. But, okay, we, we'll disagree on that, and that's why we don't usually take this, uh, questions after we have the public hearing, but-
I, I agree with Chairman, you know, he, he has knowledge in doing this, I don't. But I also agree with, uh, Commissioner Schell, uh, the answers that we just got were hypothetical. There, there was no guarantees, there's no yes or no from reaching out and getting a definitive answer. And that's what we want, we want the, we want the definitive, no, you can't do this, you can't come off of there. Because we do, uh, we all pay taxes for engineers to work for the DOT, just like y'all pay for us to be here. And we all vote for that, so I think that, uh, we, we need, we need that definitive answer. Instead of a hypothetical pulled out of the nebulous saying, well, they probably won't, you know?
But, but we can ask them that, but if the developer don't wanna buy the lane to go to it, then, you know, I mean, that may be out of the question for him, you know?
That's true.
Um, so I'm just saying, if the developer don't wanna do that, then we'd have to make a decision whether we wanna give him a right of way in off of Bowers Road or not give him a right of way.
But what about, right of way, are you saying to approve it based on the first entrance?
Yeah, to approve it, that's what I mean, I mean, that's basically if we don't approve it.
So to your question, if it is the board's pleasure to, uh, give us the time to answer this question about the one and only entrance, we're basing it on all of the research that's been done, the traffic study that's been done, DOT approval that's been done, but that was certainly not a question that was put to them in the way you've asked it, which is, is there any scenario under which a single entrance could work? And we're happy to go back and get that answer and come back to you, and if it works, it will. If it won't, we'll be honest and share that information.
And, you know, as a developer, I would think he would be better off with one because it's less expensive. You know, he ain't gotta build another entrance down the road and, and do the, the roadwork that DOT wants him to do. So as a developer side of it, I'd think it'd be probably more advantageous for him just to have one. But again, I don't know his business and, uh, but I do know the votes are not here to do multiple entrances down the road, so I don't wanna waste anybody, any, any more time tonight if, if the votes are not there.
Well, and if it's the board's willingness and pleasure, we would certainly appreciate that opportunity, and we'll be happy to come back to you if you're in a position to continue it or table it till your next available time.
I, I want it to work for both of us, okay? Because we need the investment here in the community, and I think these folks agree to that. Again, I've heard them, multiple people say that they're not against this, okay?
Right.
So let's see if we can figure out something, and maybe we make it work. So I have a motion to continue. How, how long do y'all need, um, and I- And I want the public to know, just because I call them Jonathan and Cliff or whatever, I don't know these folks, I mean, I know them, but I don't know them, so.
What were, what were the date options?
October twenty-eighth or November eleventh, and so two weeks or four weeks?
Better safe than sorry, I was safe.
November twelfth.
I mean, it takes the DOT-
It is November twelfth, I'm sorry, because of the holiday, yes.
It takes DOT a while, so I don't, just make sure you-
Or, or we could do November the twenty-fifth, so October twenty-eighth, November twelfth, or November twenty-fifth. Yes, ma'am. November twenty, November twenty-fifth is a Monday.
October twenty-eighth would be two weeks from this evening?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Is that enough time?
I believe it'll, it'll be enough time, I guess if, if the answer's a definitive no, I think that'll be enough time, or, you know, so. I think, I think we'll be fine.
Well, they can always ask, if there's not enough time, then they, you just ask it to-
Legging, leaking, moving forward.
Uh, I mean- It, it'd be hard for us to, to let everybody in this audience know, um, if it's continued or not.
I've, I've, I've done my best to stay in communication with you. I've emailed, and, and I know Scott has, has stuck, been in communication with a few folks. Um, we'll disseminate information as best as our office can. Uh, legally, if the board decides to continue tonight, that's the next date that everything's supposed to happen. If we get information back from, uh, Mr. Smith and, or Mr. Anabite that they don't have it, we, we can disseminate stuff out. We'll have to meet and continue it again to a, a, a date in the future, and we'll do our best to get it out to the folks we have contact information for. So if, we, we can't talk to everybody in the room. I, I've got your email, and Scott, Scott's got an email, so, um, and, and anyone can feel free to call the office, and we can disseminate the information that way, that's not a problem. Um, and Ms. Harris, the clerk to the board, will have it on the agenda. Till, if you look at the agenda calendar on Davidson County's website, the item will show on the, on the agenda. But, um, you know, we'll do the best we can.
Uh, give me a second, Mr. Chair.
And that's all we can do, okay, and, uh-
Or a motion, if you need a motion.
And like I say, just, I want y'all to understand too, if this don't go through, and whatever, if, if the one don't do it, I'm gonna probably ask y'all, do y'all wanna housing development or Mr. Smith to have two entrances, okay? Cause it's actually your choice when it comes to that, what you want, but you will probably get one or the other. You'll get an industrial park or a housing development, so, uh, so just keep that in mind. We fixing to adjourn, and you can ask me after the meeting, okay? Uh, that'll be up to Mr. Smith if he wants to buy a piece of land on sixty-four. If he don't wanna buy a piece of land, then it'll be up to, it'll be up to him, you know, so. Uh, again, personally, I'm okay with an entrance, the first entrance off of New Bowers. Over that, I'm not, but thank y'all very much, we have a motion-
We need, we need a motion and a second, and a vote.
Motion and a second?
No, no, on, on this vote, not the adjournment.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Alright, there we go.
A, a motion in a second, okay?
All in favor? Ah, any opposed? Thank you.
Now, 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 we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn now.
To adjourn, and Mr. Smith.